Okay, so we're gonna get going in the interest of getting going. Jim isn't here, but he's not necessarily needed to get some of the paperwork and whatnot out of the way. So, this is the Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting Thursday, April 11, 2019. Can I get an approval motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, so on the regular meeting, the minutes, an approval of the minutes for March 14, 2019, which was our regular meeting?
I wasn't here, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? I didn't.
Yeah, that was the first one.
March 14?
No. You good?
I was just gonna say, it says, on something I said on page seven, it says, "He agrees with Mr. Montani."
Ah, okay. Well, pronouns are important in today's world.
It is.
I'm a girl.
She's a woman.
Oh, thanks.
So can we change that?
I didn't hear what it was.
I'm just referred to-
Just talking to your mic, Susan.
Sorry. Thought it was on. I'm just referred to as a "he" instead of a "she" on page seven, under, it's the top of page, the top of page seven, the first thing I say. That was it for me.
Okay, everybody else, pronouns okay?
As far as I know.
Jeffrey, you sure?
I don't think I've been called a "she."
Okay, good. So with that change, can I get an approval of, I mean, a motion?
No, I was just voting.
We're not on it yet.
I'm not on the minutes yet.
But thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. We're talking about March 14, 2019, the regular meeting.
I'll make the, oh, I'm not making a motion. I wasn't here.
Yeah, please.
Sorry. Jeffrey forgot.
I'll make the motion.
You make the motion to approve it with your change? Karam, you wanna second it, Jeffrey? Karam seconds it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, so now on to the minutes of March 26, 2019, these are specific to the Surfside Crossing 40B public hearing. I had some changes, but was that the meeting you were talking about?
No.
Okay, I'm not sure which one I was, had changes on either, so hold on one second. Those are not my reading glasses.
Do you want a pair?
No, I got them.
Oh.
Alrighty. Here we are. Yeah, okay, so I had a change in, on page two of eight of the minutes. It says, "The memo states the applicant wants the Z-" this is me speaking. The memo states the applicant wants the ZVA to vote on the 156-unit proposal, then we received a packet with, oh, never mind. Never mind, that's fine. Never mind. Sorry about that. I reread it, it looks fine. So, then on page six of eight, six of eight, "Tool said there is a consensus for the 92-unit plan." I'd never, let's, I just wanna be clear, there was a consensus to speak to the 92-unit plan. There was no consensus that we liked or disliked the 92-unit plan. So I just want that to be reflected. So something to the effect, I mean, you could listen, or there was consensus that we were speaking about the 92-unit plan. So that was it. For me. You wanna just speak about the minutes?
On the 29th minute.
We'll go, we'll do them both at the same time.
On page 23, on line two, where it says, "Al Durensis," I said, "They waive their attorney privilege," and that the developer states. I would like it to say, instead of "time," I would like it to be "later," and then, "and" after "and," I would like it to say, "The developer states." And the title, it says, so it says, "The applicant waives their attorney-client privilege to leave time," and then you still use the word "and" and says, "The developer states" that the title is not working as it states. Then on line five, after it says, "She's familiar with Mr. Posner and his conditions," I do not want to put so much value on the conditions, the line five. I wanted to add that.
Could I ask, could I ask you to send those-
Sure.
-to Eleanor-
Yep.
-to me, and then I will make the changes?
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
I actually forward them tomorrow evening. Okay, great, thanks Eleanor.
Okay, so anybody else have anything to say about the minutes?
No.
No, so let's just get a motion to approve the 26th and 29th with the changes stated.
So moved.
Thank you. Jeffrey seconds it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you vote the 26th and 29th?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so on 2318, do we need to take action, or they're requesting a-
Yes, to be able to go forward, it's just been delayed because of town meetings, so it's almost very likely to happen on April 24, and they will be able to go forward without delay on May 1st.
Alright, do we need to vote on that?
Just to allow it to continue.
Alright.
So make the motion.
Thank you. Karam seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
Hold on one second. This is 2318, Adam Ross and Emma Ross, 50 Oka Rau Avenue. Okay, so that's your motion?
Yep.
Karam, you're still on? Karam's, alright, so any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Alright, so 0119, Stephen W. Russo, trustee, 43A Union Street Trust, 43A Union Street, they'd like to request to be able to withdraw without prejudice. That was as we remember the treaty.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Two seconds.
Karam. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, I didn't sit on Yates, so Susan's gonna take over.
Okay. So, this is application 0419, Linda A. Yates, 21 Derrymore Road, representing as Cohen.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will be hopefully very brief. Thank you, Eleanor. As you're well aware, this is a request for variance, for a setback, based on the idea that there is gonna be an acquisition of a substantial amount of land, hopefully in the near future. That yard sale process has been dragging on for five years. The board, I think, is aware of all the logistics involved and the conditions that seem to be proposed as acceptable to the board and my client if we decided to grant the relief. And we were, the board at the last meeting wanted to get certainty that the yard sale petition had been filed, because one of the abutters filed a private petition for a different section, and we said that we would do that here. But then actually, when we went to do that, it turned out that town council was finally prepared to file the town's petition, so we backed off and let the town file that petition. I believe that Eleanor either has a copy of it, or has provided you with a copy of it. So I think that puts us in a position that if you're prepared to grant the relief, that you don't need any additional information, or I have not requested any additional action.
I think the only thing that, didn't Mark Poor want to have an HGC approval that showed the parking different? Did you do that?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm just, I mullered in, so I remember, I thought I saw that on the tape, but I could be wrong.
We don't have that yet. We have to, we, I thought that was gonna be a condition of the approval.
Got it.
Does anyone have any questions for Stephen?
So, so if the petition is filed, then what's the, what's the timeline in terms of?
I mean, it depends. It could be, it depends. Some of them come back faster than others if they've just done title work on, was another, was it another one on Derrymore, or was Dartmouth?
There are five parcels on Dartmouth Lane, for probably the, but Delane or, Derrymore, sorry. And two of them will, one will go to this locus, and the other will go to the Daughters property across the way. And there's two that go to the one who filed a private petition, where there's going to be, for ESA subdivision, and then there's another one, maybe there's six, that goes to another abuter. So there's basically four separate abutters who will be able to acquire these parcels and merge them with their land.
So, um-
Maybe there's six.
So, once the land court finishes their review, issues a new certificate of title, then the process on our end is just board of selectmen and very quick.
Very quick. As long as I can get it on, you know, real estate assessment committee, and then agenda for a given month.
I mean, it could be as quick as three months from when the certificate is issued to the town finishes its portion, but it's been five years so far at the land court.
Was there roadblock, or it was?
Correct, yeah. Most of the roadblock at that point was waiting for the title work to be done to file the petition, and that petition has been filed. So now it just essentially needs to be reviewed and approved, and none of the, because it's an eminent domain taking, there really should be no concern. You know, a private action like this would get a very heavy review, but an eminent domain taking, you know, there's no controversy, there's no one appealing it.
Is there a site plan, Stephen, in the packet that shows the proposed relocation of the house? I just can't find it.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
Does anybody have it? Just to refer to it again.
Um, I probably have it, I may have it here, actually, 'cause I brought my old, is it this one? Sorry, I wrote all over it. Is it that?
No. Matt Matthews, no. Proposed 43A Union.
Oh, no, I'm not looking at that one.
No, I know, that's what they'll say.
Oh, that's what this is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So no, I don't have any of them.
There should be one in the packet, right?
Yeah, I know there has been, because you had commented that the window well seemed to be over the lot line, and we said that we would either eliminate that or adjust it.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to get a glance at it again. Here it is.
So what, the, when it comes back to the town, the assessment committee has to come up with a price? Is that right? Or has that already been determined? Or is it a de minimis?
It's de minimis. Something in this neighborhood would probably be a dollar or so a square foot, is that?
So there's, there wouldn't be an issue of-
Cost.
Wouldn't go through because of cost.
No, this is, I think I've even already emailed, what I do is I email the assessor a given locus with all the documentation, they come back to you, say the price per square foot, and the real estate assessment committee bases everything almost identically off of that. It is typically a dollar a square foot, depending on neighborhood factor, water views, and so forth.
It could be more, but those factors aren't here.
How do you guys feel?
I mean, I guess the only thing that I wanna just make sure is that the retaining wall, or the retainage for the window well, I think the window well should be eliminated until the, at the lease, until the taking takes, until she's able to purchase the property.
Because it's over the line.
Because it's over the line.
Yeah.
And I don't want that to show up on any of the, it doesn't show up on the site plan, for one thing, so if we're gonna attach Bracken's plan, there's no window well shown.
So that takes care of that.
So that takes care of that issue.
Okay. Well, let's attach that plan on. And we have a list of conditions in the staff report, requiring that the parking be east of the western side of the house, requiring that the nonconformity be cured before a CO is issued, agreeing that a deed restriction will be recorded prohibiting subdivision when the yard sale land is added, and that will likely be in the deed from the town, agreeing that the property is not in compliance with the relief granted if the owner declines to purchase the yard sale land from the town, and affirming that there will not be any construction built over the lot line, and this is, she's eliminating the window well.
What was the last one, basically?
It's just-
That she can't decide not to purchase this?
Yes.
Okay. And then I, the one thing is, I think that you should just refer to the site plan, 'cause east of the western side of the house doesn't make sense.
That was, Mark Poor had an issue with that, too.
It makes no sense, 'cause the western side of the house is the front door, so.
Right. I think the point was, it was supposed, the parking was supposed to be behind the front facade.
Right. East of the eastern side of the house, in a sense.
Okay.
So, but if you just attach this plan, it shows it.
It shows it, yeah. If we just, if you wanna say east of the front side of the house.
Can't we just attach the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to say it'll be shown in compliance with the-
Combined to the Bracken plan.
The Bracken plan. Okay.
Does this show the cottage? There was something, let me just make sure the cottage fits, still fits. I think it still does, but.
Well, if it doesn't, then.
Right. If it doesn't, then you guys have to come back. It doesn't look like it will completely fit with the new driveway, the way it's laid out, but it's hard to tell. Okay.
I mean, I guess I can be swayed, on the basis that this is a very unique situation.
And that both the abutters are in support of it, that was-
Yeah.
And that, it sounds like-
My concern is that we're approving it.
Right.
Before.
So it's a process.
Yeah.
Is there still the thing about not being able to get a certificate of occupancy until the-
That's in the conditions.
That's in the conditions, so.
Yes.
Is this a situation that we wanna say no further construction?
No CO, no further subdivision.
Yeah. But I mean, no further-
Construction.
Construction without coming back to us? But I mean, they would have, I mean, the, they can't do the cottage until they get the 17 feet, right?
We would have the ground cover, but not the lot area.
Right.
Yeah.
No, the cottage is intended to go in the space that they don't own yet.
Right.
Right. The way the parking is shown.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't work.
I feel the same way, Jim. I'm like, I'm not su, I'm not like 100% comfortable with it, but because it's already, the S petition is filed, it's with the town, it's, it's, I mean, we would, I don't think we would ever do this if it wasn't a yard sale situation with the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we would ever.
And I do have, just, just an aside, one comment, Stephen, I listened to the tape, and I think it's not, it's disingenuous to say that if she didn't get this variance, she'd have to build a box. That was complete falsehood, which you said last time.
Well-
That the design of the house to take off three feet would require her to build a box. That's, that's not true.
Well, if you just shaved the three feet off, it's not true, but if you recreate, try to recreate that space, you go from this L shape to more of a box, but-
There is, there is many ways to, to work the design that she would not have to build a box, three feet narrower.
You are certainly more qualified to weigh in on that than I am.
So, I'm just making that point, that I didn't think that that was a, it didn't come across as an accurate comment.
I see your point.
Okay.
Okay. If it makes the board more comfortable, I'm sure Eleanor could include the circumstances that you're talking about to, so that, in the decision, so that it's easily distinguished, you know, so that someone can't come back and say, you know, "These things are rubber-stamped." Well, no, they're not. There are circumstances in your situation that don't apply here, so that you don't, that would lessen the ability of people to do that. Right, Eleanor? Yes?
Yeah. And I think, I guess if she can't get a CO without, without the take, without her purchasing that, then.
Right. Okay, so how do we feel?
I'm okay with the, with the conditions.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Well, we have to ask the public first, just sorry, that's my fault. Anyone in the public to speak about this one? No. Okay, sorry, now you can go.
I'll make the motion. Does, is it a special permit?
Variance.
Variance with the conditions stated.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karam? Karam seconded.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you want me, Susan, do you wanna do this one, since Ed, I presume you can't, can you even do the continuance of?
No.
No, so.
So I'm not really here.
Okay. So, we're moving on to new business. The first one is 0319, estate of Nikki S. Tool, Edward S. Tool, trustee, ECMJ nominee trust, and they have requested to continue without opening to May 9, our next regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
0619, Victor P. Haley, 94 Orange Street, the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Maroney, I'm with Cohen, Cohen. The applicant's basically trying to do two pieces here. First of all, the locus is previously, under special permit, was allowed to operate as a commercial establishment in a residential area. The, that ceased to happen for well over 10 years, and they seek just to abandon that nonconforming commercial use in the residential district, and convert back to, to the conforming residential uses of the house. The second piece we're looking to do is to take a deck that's off the back of the house that encroaches into the lot line, pull it off back out of the lot line to eliminate that nonconformity, and then enclose the space and go up a second story. So it will not substantially increase any nonconformity, it'll actually reduce the nonconformity, however, it will increase the square footage on the lot line by about 194 square feet, which still keeps it below the 40% ground cover ratio.
Is that it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I gotta, I have a couple questions. The 1985 survey done by Blackwell, plan of land, doesn't show the deck. When was the deck built? Was it, was it built with a building permit?
I actually do not know when the deck was built.
Probably because it's not conforming.
Yeah.
So, well, the deck was part of your presentation, you were making things better, but yet the deck wasn't there legally, so I don't see how that argument works.
If we could show that it was more than 10 years, we look at surveys, see how old it is.
You wanna do that?
Yes, sir.
And no, I don't, I don't think we need to, because we're removing it. We're just cure, we're curing it, so it becomes a moot point. Right, we're not arguing to keep it.
But you're closing, are you closing it in?
No, they, they're taking it down and building a new mass that is-
But gonna be, it's going to be partly in that setback where the deck is now.
It is, but it's, it is still not as close to the property line as that one corner of the house.
Yeah, but the deck has nothing to do with it.
No.
Even though-
The presentation-
Presented to us as it was, here we're doing something good.
Right.
So, can we have relief?
We're taking it out of the lot line. So we are doing something.
The legal deck. Thank you.
We're trying to be nice.
I don't really see that as a selling point myself, but-
Just wanna be factually accurate.
How does everybody feel about the, the change of use from the guest house to straight-up residential?
I don't see any negative to that.
Even I don't see a negative with that, so.
One and one.
So, so that one we can put to bed.
Is there a reason why the, well, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I don't know, it could probably be done outside of the setback.
It looks like it to me.
Yeah. Certainly the closet, I think the only thing you have to give up is some of the closet and do the laundry differently. You know, having said that, it is a special permit, it's not gonna be more nonconforming than what's, than the, the actual physical part of the building that's there, but it is now only a point that's touching the line.
It, well, yeah, how do we feel about-
It puts a lot more mass in the setback, obviously. The deck being in the setback has no walls, no roof, it's much shorter, this is a pretty substantial addition.
Well, and/or the deck is there illegally, so.
Shouldn't have been, yeah.
Right, so you shouldn't be able to get into the setback.
I mean, we certainly probably have granted this type of relief, but we certainly said no as well. I mean, it seems to be, to go right, right up to the lot line, just because the rest of the house is right up to the lot line.
Right.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Is there, is there a foundation plan? What are your plans with the foundation?
It'll just be a crawl space.
How's everyone else feel?
I mean, there is a lot of room on the other side, it's not like there's another structure right up against, if this is accurate, but.
Yeah, but I don't, but, I don't necessarily think that matters.
Well.
I'm not inclined, so, how does everyone else feel?
I don't think I would incline. I think there's plenty of room on that lot to build some sort of addition that doesn't encroach.
Right. That's how I feel. Hasn't everybody in the audience came to speak to this one? No. So, um-
So it sounds like it's not the votes.
Uh, no.
I mean, I'm definitely sitting the fence, so.
Susan, you got anything to add?
Um, I think it could be done and be less, lessening the setback if that needs to be there at all.
My understanding is that the standard is that it's not substantially increasing, and so lessening isn't necessarily the standard, isn't that correct?
Yeah, but you are, if the deck wasn't put on there legally, then you're not lessening the nonconformity.
You're increasing it.
You're increasing it, there's more square footage in the, in the setback with the new addition.
Right.
So if you wanna maybe continue and get some information about when the deck was added, and if it was legal, um-
But your, your finding under a special permit is not whether or not it could be done without the, without the relief, the finding under a special permit is just that it's not substantially more detrimental than existing. And both on this property and generally in this downtown area, this is an extremely common situation. The neighbor on that side is not objecting, you know, the fact that it could physically be done without it isn't the standard.
What did we do, what was that?
No, but I mean, I think the argument is, it's substantially more detrimental.
In what way?
It's closer to the lot, and it's closer to the neighbor's property, it's, it's more unsafe, if you will. The setbacks are there for a reason.
Yeah, why couldn't he just build out a little bit more to the backyard?
I don't know why, yeah, why you'd wanna come get a special permit when you can just do it as a matter of right by just, you know, changing the design of hair.
I think we learned from Lisa that I shouldn't provide design advice.
It's probably good, good thing. Do you, do you and your client wanna think about it?
Well, let me, can I ask the board, does the two-story massing versus the one-story massing in the setback make a difference, or is it just in the setback at all that's the issue?
It's probably the setback.
I think it's the setback. For me.
I mean, he's getting almost as close to that line as he possibly can without touching it.
Right. And, and I think the existing house is over the line. Why didn't you want to go over the line? Just to keep things consistent.
I don't want to be greedy yet. So I, I think based on the board's comments, we would continue to the next scheduled meeting and go back and review with our client. So that's...
Yeah, maybe research the deck.
What?
Yeah, definitely, definitely research the deck.
They've, they've asked to continue.
I'll make that motion.
All right. So on, on both things, I mean, were we going to vote on two different things?
No, I think...
It's written together?
It's written together. Yeah, I don't know that you can issue one with that.
Okay. So we're going to continue the whole thing?
Yeah.
Hi.
To, when's the next meeting?
May 9th.
May 9th.
Yeah, so...
May 9th, 1 o'clock here. So who makes the motion to continue to May 9th?
I did.
Lisa? Karen seconded. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Kathy Hurt, Sharon, and Paul Sharon, trustees. Paul Sharon, uh, 48 Wall Street. Blah, blah, blah. For the, for the applicant? Oh, Don Bracken.
Uh, this application, first, the permit under the section 13917 height limitations. Under, uh, section C7, which allows exceptions.
That mic not working?
Sounded like it to me.
Sounded like it to me. No, that sounds better.
Uh, so again, under section 13917 height limitations, uh, this application is under section C7. Exceptions to 30-foot height, uh, for projects within a FEMA flood zone. In this case, uh, we have an existing, uh, property. The lot itself complies with, uh, current zoning requirements. Uh, the existing structure that's on the site is going to be demolished. A new structure will be constructed in its place. Uh, the existing structure, uh, complies with setbacks with the exception of an AC unit in the porch and the, on the front of the property. Uh, the property is located in flood zone AE elevation 7. Uh, the ground elevation on the lot is about 4.2. Uh, the existing house currently does not comply with flood zone or building code requirements. It has a first floor elevation of 5.5. Um, it's proposed to construct a new dwelling, uh, meeting all setback requirements, uh, meeting, uh, uh, flood zone requirements. The first floor structure is proposed to be at 8.2. Uh, the minimum first floor has to be at least a foot above the flood elevation of 7. Uh, the actual height calculates out at 28.5 feet, uh, to the peak. That's the distance, uh, the actual elevation of the peak in elevation 8, which is the minimum. We did add a couple of tenths just to make sure that it wasn't too close to the 8. Uh, the project has received HDC approval and also, uh, has received approval from the Conservation Commission. There are no, uh, proposed grade changes on the site. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for you, Don. You said it calc's at, at 28.5 is the elevation or that's the height?
It's above elevation 8.
From elevation 8 to the peak, peak is 28.5. Uh, from the first floor to the peak would be 28.3. It's funny how the bylaw is written.
The bylaw is weird, yeah.
The bylaw is weird. It says that the minimum, so the minimum is 8. But we typically set them an inch or two higher, just, just for a small...
I mean, arguably, you, you, and you could make the argument, and I don't know if this was, was at town meeting or not, that you really should be calculating the height of the building not from the first floor.
But from where grade would have been.
Or eight inches below the top of the foundation, if you will.
Yes, exactly.
Because otherwise you get an extra bite at the apple.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, yeah.
And also, isn't the bylaw written from the FEMA regulation as opposed to the extra foot is from the building code?
Well, the bylaw just says whatever's required under either code. In the building code, yeah.
Oh, I see, it's not just FEMA.
Added a foot to it, I think, after the bylaw, so...
Yeah, it did.
For the first floor elevation, so... You know, that is allowing structures to go higher too.
That might be why the, I mean, maybe that's why. That didn't go through at town meeting, right?
That was what they were trying to change.
They were trying to...
It was just very hard to understand.
Yeah, but I think establishing, I, I agree. Like, taking it from the finished floor seems...
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me. You get a higher building than you would if you were at grade.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Right.
But we are at 28.5, not 29.9, so there is...
But that's from the finished floor, so you would be...
So you would be, you'd be over 30.
Oh, yeah, we're over 30. I mean, if you look at the plan, you know, we still, in the zoning summary, we calculated what the ele, what the, um, height is under the mean grade. And it's 36.5. If you were, not to get the special permit before the special permit was available, that would have been the height in order to make the structure compliant.
But if you were to just assume that grade could be eight inches below the top of foundation, would you be over 30 feet?
Uh, good question. So that would be 18 foot and a half. We'd be right at 30.
Right, right at 30.
You'd be right at 30? Yeah, all right, well, then I'm okay with it.
Because it's 28.5.
So you get one foot for the...
Floor sandwich.
It's really, it's really 20 inches, it's not a foot and a half.
Right, it's 20. That's right. It's really 20.
It's right there.
I thought you guys were exact, so...
Well, I say it's right there. I mean, a lot of people make it six inches and not eight inches, but, uh, but anyway... Until the bylaw changes, I think we should have, you know...
I think I would be more reluctant if it was at 30, not the 28 and a half, because with fuzzy math, it works.
Then it should be 32, you're right. Yep.
But the bylaw should be changed, in my opinion.
Did you vote for it?
No.
All right, so how do we feel? The rest of it all complies, correct?
Yeah. Even all the AC units are all out of the setback, right?
Don, the house, uh, the, the existing pictures of the house look very similar to what was designed. But no, it's not. You're demolishing that house.
Correct, yeah.
I guess it doesn't really look the same.
No, it doesn't look the same at all.
No, that was a weak moment.
It looks the same kind of in-floor plan, like the shape of it.
Exactly.
But it's completely different.
That's where I got confused.
Yep.
Uh, all right. Does anybody in the audience want to talk about this? No. Uh, okay.
Do you want to talk about it some more?
Yeah. I'd like this to go on forever.
Until five of...
Ah, you're a sugar right here.
Five of four.
All righty.
Oh, God.
Let's keep moving.
Okay.
Uh, so, can I get a motion? The grant of relief is requested? What about, uh, time constraints?
Is that considered the neighborhood? Yeah, probably.
Definitely.
Yeah. So the typical Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yeah. No exterior construction?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm sure they're not going to be happy with that, but then...
So, it's standard.
It's sort of standard.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. So is that your motion? Thank you. Yeah, who wants a second there? Susan seconds it. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Uh, I can't sit on, uh, long.
Oh, it's, it's contin, oh, we have to continue it, sorry.
Ah, that's fine.
The next one. Yeah. I can't either.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, that's fine. So, uh, the next one is, uh, 0819 Martin T. Long, trustee. Martin T. Long, revocable trust, and Francis E. Long, trustee. Um, this is a request to continue with the opening to our next regularly scheduled meeting, May 9th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where did that go?
We're done. Yeah, it's quick. Okay.
All right.
Can I get a better pen?
Yeah, I know, mine, mine aren't too.
So here we are at Old Business, uh, the 40B Continued Public Hearings, hearing, 2018 Surf Site Crossing LLC, Surf Site Crossing 40B. So, uh, let me get my notes. There is some of this old stuff. All right. Get rid of this.
Free, chalks and whiskey. I don't know what I'm doing, but I think that's...
Uh, okay. So we already talked about the minutes. Uh, I'd like to take a moment to talk about the timeline. And the, the applicant has, uh, said they want us to close the public hearing, or asked us to close the public hearing today. So just in, in the interest of moving forward, there are some real constraints on the board in the next three weeks. I believe Susan is away on vacation next week. Lisa's on vacation the following week. Um, I'm following two weeks. I'm going away May 14th to the 19th. I don't know about anybody else. Anyway, the, the upshot of all that is, um, basically as a courtesy, just so we can try to finish this in as orderly a manner as possible, I would like to ask the applicant if they're willing to give us an extra 20 days. Although 20 days might bring us to a, a weekend. Just to get the, get things written up, voted on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Paul Havity, Blatman Bobrowski, and Havity representing the applicant. That's not an unusual request. I certainly, I've, I've had preliminary discussions with my clients about that possibility. Um, and they had indicated a willingness to extend until the end of May, um, which I think is approximately an additional 10 days. But before we finish this discussion tonight, I will take them aside and see if we can give you the, the full 20 days that you're looking for. I don't know what that ending day would be. Would obviously want to take a look at that. But again, I, I don't think it's an unreasonable request.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you don't think it's unreasonable, but you don't want to grant us the extension yet?
Again, the discussions I have had with my clients, they had told me that they would be willing to go until the end of the month, end of May. I haven't had further discussions with them, so I'm not going to speak for them. And I think that they're going to want to see how the rest of the process plays out tonight, um, before we get to that point. But again, I personally don't think that what you're requesting is unreasonable, and I would be very hopeful that my clients will grant it.
I appreciate that. Uh, it, it does seem, you know, the part that doesn't feel quite as comfortable as I'd like is you want to wait and see how all this plays out. That sounds like a leverage issue.
No, it's, it's, Mr. Chairman, it's not at all a leverage issue. It, it is, um, an, an issue of really wanting to see sort of the conduct of the hearing and whether or not, um, you know, we're in a situation where we're really at each other's throats or we're acknowledging the fact that we're just not on the same page. And, you know, we're going to do what we do and you are going to do what you do. And if that's the case, I, I'm confident I can convince my clients to give you the additional time you're looking for. On the other hand, if we're at a, a situation at the end of this hearing where we're being berated over and over again because we're insisting upon the closing of the hearing, they may not be as accommodating. So I...
So what you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly... Don't, don't do that. It's not really that funny, either. Because we're under a lot of pressure here. And...
So is everybody else?
No, you're not.
Yes, they are, they live there.
Cut it out, okay?
So...
All I'm saying is I don't understand the leverage issue. In other words, if somehow we go in a certain direction, which I, I have no, um, prior knowledge of how things are going to play out, you're, you're, you're saying you will extend it if we're nice, kind of thing.
I thought you said that he would, that they agreed to extend till the end of the month already.
Well, that if.
I, I have already had that discussion previously with my client, and they have, they have assured me that they would be willing to grant that. Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I did just, my client did just ask me to come over. And he said, "Find out exactly what the date is that you were looking for the continuance since you thought it might have been on a weekend."
Well, I think an extra 20 days, because...
So what date does that take us to?
Eleanor, what was, what was the 40 days?
Uh, May 20.
So May 20...
So May 31st would be 31 days, so it's nine more. So it's June 9th approximately?
Yeah, approximately.
And what day of the week is June 9th?
June 9th is a Sunday. So it would either be the 7th or the 10th. We don't, either one is acceptable to us.
My clients have indicated they'd be willing to grant an extension of the time for the board to render its decision to June 10.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, so do we need to...
But still, please be nice to us, don't it?
Yeah, so we're going to get that paperwork out of the way.
Yes.
Do we have to take a vote on that, George? Probably should, right?
You can't, you won't.
Right.
Sure.
So...
I'll make that motion.
To, to accept the extension...
Of the, that's for the decision.
Yeah.
Not for the closing of the hearing, obviously, till June 9th.
June 10th.
10th.
10th. June 10th.
10th.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Obviously, our position is going to be that we want you to close the hearing, so it's probably academic for the status. But maybe we should wait to, for the board to vote until you're ready to close the hearing? Before we talk about an extension?
Why don't we get this done?
Why don't we just get it out of the way?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Didn't want to run into any procedural issues.
I think you can do that. You can, you can both accept the extension of the deadline for rendering a decision, uh, following the close of a public hearing up to and including June 10, 2019. Well, that's just for your motion.
Yeah.
So you could say that. Again, I don't need the over mic.
No, why don't you go to the mic and then we'll, we'll appropriate your motion? If that's okay? Because you said it better than I did.
I forgot what he said.
Render a decision. Good afternoon, members of the board. Mr. Chair, George Pooch from KP Locktown Council's office. I, I would recommend a, a motion, um, a motion to accept the applicant's agreement to extend the deadline, for the board to render a decision, uh, following the close of a public hearing up to and including June 10, 2019.
Okay. 2019, so I'm just going to appropriate that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you're going to make that motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Let's see now on this. All right, so we'll get that signed and, uh, move on. So, does the applicant have anything that they want to say today, or...
Well, so, Mr. Chairman, as was discussed at our last hearing, we have submitted a rather substantial amount of additional information that relates to the 92-unit project. I prepared sort of an overview of what had been submitted. I don't know if you want to bother running through that or not. I did want to be rather brief, so we leave plenty of time for people to come up and make whatever last comments they want to make. We have submitted a memo on the HO8 charges, a supplemental memo on the 92-unit development, a lotting plan from Bracken Engineering, a site development plan from Bracken Engineering, a landscape plan from Weinmeier J. Associates, an enlarged landscaping plan, landscaping notes, concept plans for individual cottages, concept landscape plan for individual houses. For architectural plans, we have submitted cottage-type plans, single-family matrices, condo building plans, fourplex A and B, condo building plans for the multifamily B and C, condo building plans for the multifamily A and D, multifamily matrices, duplex building plans, duplex matrices, cottage sheds and maintenance barn plans, and a recreation building plan. We also had a conference call yesterday to do with, having to do with the sewer connection issue, as the board had requested at the last meeting. I think it's fair to say that the applicants and their consultants, and the DPW and the consultants for the town are not necessarily on the same page as how to handle the sewer connection. We have a memo that was submitted earlier today. We have a bunch of copies of that, if you'd like to have them distributed. I don't know if you've received them yet or not.
The Weston and Sampson?
The Weston and Sampson, no.
Yeah, we have that.
Email?
No, they came in after we started.
Yeah, no, yeah, these...
It's on the...
So Don can run through the particulars of his memo. My memo really is just sort of addressing the process, you know, which is to indicate that, you know, we have proposed a particular method of connecting to the municipal sewer system. We believe that the method that we have proposed is something that's appropriate, that can be done within existing capacities, even if it's not what the town considers to be its sort of ideal approach for this connection. We think that there is sufficient capacity with the mitigation that we are proposing to allow this connection to happen. It's the position of your consultants that they would prefer to see the gravity route that was previously discussed. During our discussion, council for the board had indicated, I think, some frustration that we hadn't provided more information with regards to that gravity option. So part of the reason for the submission of the memo from Don Bracken is to provide some additional information from that, but I did really just wanted to hammer home the point that that's not what we are proposing. So we have not done a full design of a gravity option because we don't intend to connect via gravity. That's not our proposal because we think that our proposal is something that is sufficient and can be done within the existing infrastructure with appropriate mitigation measures that Don can talk about. And, I mean, it seems like we're sort of over the hump with regards to whether or not to close the hearing tonight, but I think it's, we're sort of in a similar position with regard to sewer as we are to sort of the concept of the review of the 92-unit plan. I fully appreciate the board's concerns and desire to have a more complete review of information regarding that design. It's simply not the design that my clients want to construct, so they don't see any benefit to extending the course of the hearing to have further discussions which will resign, most likely result in a design that's even less, you know, appropriate for them than that design. So I understand that, you know, the board's perspective is completely different. You think that that design is going in the right direction, and you'd like to follow it up and really get to something that you like a lot better.
Well, it's not just what we like better.
What you feel is more appropriate, I understand.
Right.
And that's okay. At some point in the process, you get to the stage where, you know, the board is insisting on one position, the applicant is on another, and you're just, you're not going to come to the meeting of the minds, and it's just simply time to move on to the next stage. Doesn't mean anybody's right or wrong. Doesn't mean that we're insisting that you do anything in particular with your decision. You're going to do whatever you deem appropriate, and we'll take whatever steps we deem appropriate. So that's really the end of what I have to say. I think, you know, Don can give you some more information on the sewer, if you're interested in that, or we can answer any other questions you may have.
Yeah, I don't really, how does everybody feel about that? I don't really see getting into the nitty-gritty of a plan that no one has agreed to. It's, I mean...
I'd rather hear from David, maybe from David Clay, see him.
You want to hear about more details on the sewer?
No, no.
I mean, that's what David would, you know, my concern is just going down the rabbit hole, and...
It's taking so much time.
No one's agreed on a plan. The only plan that I, we've seen, I believe, is going into the, one of the forest mains, which the town's consultant has said the information either wasn't there, or that wasn't going to work.
Right.
Blah, blah, blah. So I don't, I don't know that we need to hear from Don, but you want to speak about it, Don, briefly? I mean, you don't have to. I don't really want you to.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. The memorandum is just a recap, I think, of opposition.
Yeah, and we just got it, and I haven't read it, and it doesn't really mean much to me.
Let's move on.
You know, that issue's going to be, going to be, we're going to condition whatever we do somehow on the sewer. And would it have been nice to have worked out a plan? Yes. But with the closing of the public hearing, we don't have time to do that.
That's fine.
So, yeah.
All right, so we have no further presentation to make. We're happy to answer any comments that may come up during the rest of the hearing.
Okay, so one of my thoughts was to do a quick review of the waivers, but I'm open to suggestions from the board. The other option would be to go to the public, hopefully not just hear how the project is not to their liking, specifics that we may use in terms of trying to determine what to do. So, I mean, I think the waiver, the waiver issue, although I, because it's, I mean, we might get a little more clarity on a few of the waivers by doing that first, and the applicant can answer questions about them versus, once we close the public hearing, there is no conversation about it.
Sure.
So you want to go there?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And again, I'm not, I don't think we're going to get super specific about it, but let's try it.
Mr. Chairman, there are members of certain departments here who need their input.
Okay, excellent. The first one, 139-7, the use chart, doesn't seem to really be that, you know, something we need to discuss.
Right.
The...
We don't, no waiver for the next one, right?
No waiver is requested for 139-12B, the overlay districts. The intensity regulations, I don't think we need to discuss them. We don't necessarily have to agree with their waivers.
I have one question, though.
Go ahead.
I didn't see what the percentage of coverage was on the condo lots, or lot. I can't, I couldn't even really tell. Is that one big lot?
Yes, one big lot.
Right.
Do you have that calculation? Yeah, it's 30% on the condo lot.
For the condos, too.
Along with the single families. The duplexes is 35%.
Okay.
So it's 30% on the condos?
Yes, okay. All other lots grow coverage, 30%, including condos. And that's one lot?
Yep. On, so you're good in there, please? 139-19B, paren 1 and D, screening of parking. You say you want a waiver. I'm just curious, why? Why can't you meet that requirement? Or you just don't want to?
Turned around looking for Mary Ann, but she's not here, but, um, it's probably not technically required, but I think it was left in there to be reserved. The parking area itself is interior to the lot, so we wouldn't be able to buffer the parking area to, against the buildings, you know what I mean? If you look at the configuration, so, but it is buffered from the perimeter with the...
Because of the duplex.
The natural buffer. You know, in other words, if we had to buffer the parking lot, we'd have to buffer between the parking lot and the proposed building, so it could be taken that way technically, so I think we just ask for the waiver, not to buffer the parking lot to ourselves, I guess. I don't think there's been many situations like this, that...
Not many situations where the parking is interior to the lot.
Yeah, around the buildings, and it, you know, and that parking lot is not adjacent to any budding properties directly. So I think Mary Ann felt to leave it in there, just to cover it.
Just in case.
Well, we don't want, we don't want waivers floating around just because, so that was part of my issue with discussing it. If the waiver is not requested, it's, so I'm just going to make a note?
No waiver.
No waiver. Well, they're requesting it. It's still here on the paper that they're requesting it, so, um, we'll have to maybe delve into that section a little bit more deeply in terms of what is what. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, in my opinion, anyway, we already comply with that, with the plan that you have, so.
So, okay.
We don't need the waiver.
George, at this point, can they resc, can they change the request to no waiver required?
Yeah, but you need that on the record.
Yeah, I'm asking.
Yes, certainly. And so I asked Don, do the plans show compliance with this requirement? And he said that it does, therefore there's no need for this waiver. So we're certainly happy you can strike that from the waiver request, or if you want to make a decision on the waiver and simply decide no on that one specific request, we're fine with that as well.
Okay.
Just say not needed.
Well, I would prefer to determine that it's not needed. I mean, I believe, Don, but they say they don't need it, rather than take it out, so we can just vote no on it. It serves the same purpose.
Okay.
Unless we determine it was needed, and still we can vote no on it, or yes. Does that make sense? No, yes, maybe?
Sure.
No, not really. I mean, the, your decision ultimately, waivers that they're not requesting and that you feel apply to this project, you're going to want to say, you know, subject to all other, you're going to specify what waivers, if any, you're granting, and then you're going to say all, something to the effect of all other requirements, you know, under the zoning bylaw shall apply. So you do want on the record, which I think they've, they've made the concession that they are not requesting a waiver of the screening of the parking provision.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to.
All right, so no waiver required per the applicant? Or no waiver requested per the applicant? Let me back up for a second here. I know that in the past, we have gotten comments specific to the waiver list. I know Bruce Barry is, how does the board feel? Do we want to go, do we want to go to the public on each and every waiver, or does it make more sense for us to go through it and then ask for any additional commentary?
Let's just go through it and then, and then ask for comments from the public.
Section 139-20.1B, the driveway access to be approved by Nantucket DPW. They're acting as, asking us to be the DPW. So, how do we feel about that? Do we, well, I mean, I'm not asking how we feel about it as much as do we need more information, or do we need some clarity from the applicant?
I don't think on this one, yeah.
No?
I don't think so, either.
We can just say missed to meet, whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
They do need now a, well, 139-20.1, this is also B, parentheses 1, not more than one driveway access on a lot.
For the condo lot, right?
No, the condo lot. No, I think the only issue now is, well, yeah, wouldn't you need it on the condo lot as well? Don, because you have two accesses?
It's hard to tell where the condo lot lines are. Do they, does it include the parking?
The parking is within the condo lot. I don't know, can we get the lotting plan up on the screen, maybe?
Yeah.
I know, I know these lots here are for the duplex lots also, because if you...
Yeah, well, I was going to get to the duplex.
Yeah.
The other waiver is requested to allow more than one driveway access on specifically lot 11, 13, 14, and 15, which are the duplex lots.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're correct, technically, with the driveway that comes in like this, we would need, that lot should be on that list. I can't see the lot numbers in front of me right now, but 11, 13, and 14, and 15, I believe, the duplex lots.
That's 12, 13, 14.
Well, yeah, the numbers are screwed up.
You know, I think 12 is just missing. It should have been 11, 12, 13. I think that must be a type of...
It should be 12, 13, 14, 15 for the duplexes.
Right.
Plus 11.
Where's 11?
11 is the condo lot.
11 is the condo lot.
Got it.
So it's just, the 12 was just missing when it was typed up.
Okay.
This is 11, 13, 14, 12. Maybe you have a different list than I do. I printed it...
No, 12 is missing.
Yeah, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Okay.
As multiple driveways.
Okay, so no waiver for the next?
Yeah, so 139-20.1B2F2, minimum driveway, no waiver. They're all going to be 10 feet. The onsite turnaround, I don't think we need to discuss that? Does anybody want to discuss onsite turnaround?
Is that any safety with fire trucks, blah, blah, blah? We're going to do that at the end, though?
Sure.
Okay.
What about 139-23, site plan review? They'd like a waiver from that. I guess my question is why?
Mr. Chairman, this is really a procedural waiver. It's not a substantive waiver, and in fact, we technically don't need to request it. Your comprehensive permit process assumes all other local permitting processes, so site plan approval is not necessary for this project. So again, if you want to make a determination that this waiver is not necessary because the comprehensive permit takes care of the site plan approval process, we're fine with that.
Determination not necessary, so in essence, you're withdrawing that request? Is that right? No? Keep me on the right path.
I am happy to state that we are withdrawing that request because it is not necessary because the comprehensive permit alleviates the need for site plan approval. This is all other local permitting. Just like, we don't need to get special permits, we don't need to get a, you know, order of conditions under a local wetland bylaw. All of, all of the local permits are a part of whatever decision you issue.
George, do you want to speak?
Yeah, the only caveat is, you're not going to be able to, they would object if you applied it. You know what I'm saying? They're saying a waiver is not required, but they're also saying we're certainly not going to agree to site plan review, so just know that.
So keep, what would your recommendation be? Keep it in as a request, and then we can, we can decide if we want to do it?
Yes.
Okay, Don?
That's fine. My only point was that it's a procedural waiver.
I got it.
We can't be required to go through site plan approval on a comprehensive permit project.
139-26, issuance of building permits and use permits, C1. Okay. Certificate of Appropriateness issued by Nantucket Historic District Commission, required as part of the building permit application. This also seems like a procedural one. They're not, we are the HDC in essence, so I believe that during our deliberations, we still have time to, or time, the opportunity to look at the plans, comment on the plans, redline the plans, you know, do what we feel is necessary to the plans, and make it part of the conditions that they have to comply with X. So I still think we're going to have an opportunity to do that. So I don't, I don't know that we really have to discuss this one?
Nope.
No? The next one, one, no building permits shall be issued until fees are paid. I mean, I guess I'd have to, I'd have to ask why. Why do you think that would be reasonable? But we don't have to go there either. We'll, we'll talk about that one later. I don't think there's any more information we need on that, do we?
No.
No? Okay, on the occupancy, 139-28, occupancy permits, B2, written certification required by the Nantucket Historic District Commission.
Is that saying that they don't need to be inspected?
Well, that's the question, and it's a good question. Paul, in the past, we've asked basically a town employee who works for the HDC, or works for the town, he does the inspections at the end of the project, not at the end of the project, but as the buildings are built, to ensure compliance. We're not going to do that. So I, that's my understanding on how it's going to work. Do you see there's going to be any issue with that?
I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. That's very typical in a comprehensive permit process. It requires submission of final plans. Those final plans can be reviewed by the town staff that generally would review that sort of plan. It's not a new approval process, it's an administrative review. We don't have any problem with that.
I'm not talking, go ahead.
It's about construction review, to make sure that the buildings have been built in compliance with whatever comments we make on the plan.
And that's also absolutely appropriate, that that's part of a comprehensive permit process to have that sort of oversight.
So you're not requesting a waiver for that, then?
It's a matter of getting a certificate from the HDC. You certainly, we can't be required to go through a process in which they have any sort of discretionary approval. Ultimately, this board is still serving, even on the post-permit stuff, as HDC, but if they have staff person that prepares a report, they can prepare it for you instead of preparing it for the HDC.
That sounds okay to me.
I mean, it's really going to go to the building inspector. It's about the certificate of occupancy.
Right, and we... Right. And we, typically what happens, if you're not in a 40B situation, you go to the HTC, you get your approval, you build your house, so many things comes to, to look at it and make sure you put the windows where you were supposed to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that has happened on the last two 40Bs that I've been involved in as well. So we just want that town, that staff person to do that. Now if they report-
And that is fine. As long as the oversight remains with the board, having that staff person do that is perfectly acceptable.
Okay, fine. So then, as I'm hearing it, the, the okay or the checkbox would go to us, and in our regularly scheduled meeting, you would then, we would then check it off as yes or no, send it on to the building department. Yes?
Yeah, but it's not, you're not getting that administrative review. You said before, you're not going to do it. You're not going to be the one who determines that the windows are in the right place.
No, no, the staff would do that. They would give us the report saying it was done in compliance or not in compliance, because believe it or not, sometimes it's not.
Yes.
And then we would do, we would do what we need.
A sign off that goes to the building inspector for the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, okay. All right. Just wanted to be clear, that that, that process is going to happen.
Yes.
Okay.
So they still request the waiver because it's not coming from the HTC, yeah. Okay.
But we're going to condition it in some fashion to keep that process in.
Can we talk about the, the building permit application fees?
Well, we didn't, yeah, we can go back to it. Their, their wa, their only waiver requested is waiving the building permit application for the affordable units.
Right.
Do you want more information on that?
No, no, but we'll talk about that in a future.
Yeah. I mean, we can get back to these today if we have time to, to go into the substantive issues, but let's see if we can get through all of them first and, just in case we need more information. Okay, so, moving on to the Town and Nantucket Comprehensive Permit Chapter 40B Regulations, Section 3.01I. States the applicant shall admit any and all copies of materials applications filed with the subsidizing agency. The application contains pro forma in pursuit to 760 CMR 56.056. Board may request to review the pro forma or other financial statements for a project only after certain preconditions have been met. The waiver requested is, to the extent that such preconditions have not been met, to the extent legally necessary, a waiver is requested. I, that seems to me to be very open-ended, to the extent.
Mr. Chairman, I would say at this stage of the process, it's also unnecessary. It really addresses the situation of how a pro forma review could occur during the course of a hearing process. The Housing Appeals Committee regulations address certain preconditions that are required before a board is allowed to conduct a pro forma review. We're not going in that direction anyway, so this particular waiver request is now irrelevant, and we
Any negative to the withdrawal?
No, it's a moot issue at this point. I, I would agree with that. That refers to the requirements of the regulations.
Got it. All right, miscellaneous waivers. Nantucket Hist-, uh, Nantucket Historic District Commission, our applicant requests a waiver from the applicability of the Nantucket Historic District Commission requirements, including the requirements of obtaining a certificate of appropriateness from the HTC. This is basically the same waiver we talked about before. And I don't, I don't think there's anything else we need to talk about on that one. Applicant further requests all permits or approvals related to signs, satellite dishes, roof lines set forth in Nantucket Code, Chapter 124, which are under the jurisdiction of the HTC, be issued by the ZBA as part of the comprehensive permit process. Again, I think, I think we accept our role as the HTC, per se. I don't know that there's any information on signage. Do you intend, well, you can't at this point, give us any further information.
So essentially, Mr. Chairman, this waiver request would be for the board to act as the HTC in approving whatever information has been provided to you to this point. We would not expect you to approve anything that we haven't submitted. So if at some point in the future, we determine that there is additional information that needs review, we would have to come back for a modification.
All right. So again, I, I could, I could put that in the procedural column. Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners, Water Department and Sewer Department, applicant requests that any permits or approvals required to connect to the municipal sewer system and the municipal water system be granted by the ZBA as part of the comp permit, and that any requirements to apply to the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners, the Water Department and the Sewer Department, or any other board or commission related to the sewer or water system be waived. Is that procedural?
Yes and no. I mean, you are going to act as the local board on that. So you're either going to deny or grant, or grant with conditions, conditions related to sewer.
And water.
You could, but you're, you can water. And you could, you know, like I said, you could deny, approve, approve with conditions.
Okay. Yeah.
You, you can't, you can't render your decision and send them to the board.
Right. We can't say we don't, we don't know enough about this. Okay. All right. You didn't want to add to any of that, right?
That's fine.
Nantucket Code, Chapter 132, trees and shrubs, the extent, this is the waiver that's being requested. To the extent applicable, applicant requests that any permits, approvals, or waivers arising thereunder be issued by the ZBA in connection with the comp permit.
What sort of, what is that referring, what kind of waivers are there?
Well, again, I mean, the, I'm very uncomfortable with the notion of to the extent, extent applicable. What is the extent that's applicable? Do you know? Paul?
I don't, Don, do you have a response to that? Again, this really goes more into the procedural category. You have a set of plans and all sorts of information. We're asking you to make a decision based upon that information. We're asking you to act as the local boards with regards to all of these different procedural issues. But again, we're not asking you to make a decision based upon information that has not yet been submitted to you.
All right.
To the extent that you don't have sufficient information over a particular issue, I presume that your decision will address that.
Okay, just as an editorial, it's, it's hard for us because that's where, with a little more time, we would have gotten somebody to take a look at these things, as they related to the 92-unit plan that we were just given yesterday, and actually been able to speak to it. But, so it's difficult. I understand that it's just a procedural issue, but there are, there, when you say to the extent applicable, we don't know what the extent is yet, so we're going to have to try to determine that. And, you know, just sort of.
It's not procedural. I mean, you're going to, you're going to have to look at the record, and you're going to have to render a decision. And if you find that it's, it's, they haven't justified getting a waiver from it, you're going to, you're going to have a decision which requires compliance.
Right. I mean, and again, I think ultimately, if we don't know the extent to which something is applicable, it's just going to be, you have to comply with, no waiver will be granted. You have to comply.
Yeah, you're, you're going to, you're going to specify which, if any, waivers you are specifically granting.
Right.
And Mr. Chairman, I think that that's a fair point. The only thing that I would add to that is you do have plans and information that have been submitted. And ultimately, that's really what the basis of a decision is on a comprehensive permit, rather than a waiver list. You are approving a set of plans. So to, to the extent you have that information in front of you, I would ask that, any decision at least state that we are approving the plans as submitted. Any waivers that have not been identified or shown on these plans are not granted. I'm fine with language like that.
I'm glad. Okay, we're going to move on. I think we got that one. I think we get to the same thing on the lighting.
Outdoor lighting?
An outdoor lighting. We will somehow either try to discern what the extent, well, I'll read it. Nantucket Code, Chapter 102, outdoor lighting, Nantucket, I mean, Nantucket. Applicant intends to comply with same, but to the extent applicable, any waivers or permits arising thereunder be issued by the ZBA in conjunction with the comp permit. Again.
What does that mean?
It'd be nice for them to say, like, this is what the town requires, but we're only giving you this, and this is why we need a waiver. But they're not giving us that.
You're asking for detail.
God forbid.
Well, I, I'm more asking, because I do believe there's probably, well, there is a great, much greater level of detail on these plans than, than we had in the past on this particular iteration. It's just, now we're going to either have to try to determine the extent applicable, or I think we would just have to say no waiver granted. And you would have to comply.
Mr. Chairman, I just consulted with Mr. Bracken, and he has indicated we are, we have submitted a lighting plan that is compliant with local requirements. We're not asking for any substantive waivers with regards to lighting. This is simply a procedural request that you issue the permits for the, you know, whatever permits are required for lighting, that you issue them, rather than some other board. We're not looking for a substantive waiver.
So, so we would, when we're going over this waiver, if I've heard you correctly, we would just, the applicant will comply with the same, instead of intends to?
Will comply with the substantive requirements of the bylaw, just not the procedural requirements. Any permit that's required to be issued will be issued by this board under the plans as submitted without substantive waivers.
So do we have, Paul, do we have, do we have to issue waivers for all, like, for every, since we absorb all the permitting processes, processes, do we have to do a waiver for every permit?
Well, you would, you would, or you would make, you would render conditions under the substantive requirements.
Right, right. But I mean, like, for all of these, do we have to grant a waiver for every, you know, HTC and the treat, like, for every code? I mean, it's clear that it's a 40B, and so we are the permitting issuing authority for everything.
Yeah, and, and a lot, a lot of those issues have, have become moot, because you're not, you can't require them to go to HTC now.
Right. So, so why are we issuing a waiver?
You wouldn't be, but you would then, you would, like I say, the only thing that you can't do is have a condition which requires them to then go to a local board after.
Right.
But, so what you really want to focus on is conditions that you would apply substantively under the substantive provisions of the bylaw or code provisions that issue.
Right.
And you would do that in the future.
But I'm saying, since they asked for these waivers for the, so let's use this, the lighting one as an example, that it's just a procedural request, we still have to make a decision because they requested it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so Mr. Chairman, I've run into this issue in many projects that I've represented both boards and developers on. And I think the point is a very fair point. Generally, when I'm representing a board, what I would instruct them to do is actually deny the waiver as unnecessary as a procedural waiver, and require compliance with the substantive provisions of the bylaw. But from an applicant's perspective, it's prudent to at least make the request in your waiver request, because sometimes you run into boards who will say, well, no, you didn't ask for this particular waiver, so you've got to go back to this board and get an approval before you can get a building permit. So this helps sort of flesh out that issue as part of the process. But ultimately, it's true that there is no specific requirement for a waiver, because it's all part of the Chapter 40B process.
Okay. So that, that's all part of what you'll do, in terms of?
Figure out what substantive requirements.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So Nantucket Code, Chapter 127, to the extent that the construction of the project may require issuance of a permit for opening of any public way or any other matter requiring a permit under Nantucket Code, Chapter 127, applicant requests that ZBA issue any such permit as part of the comprehensive permit. To me, that seems substantive. I mean, we don't, so we-
You're going to have to look at these provisions, provision by provision.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that? And those would only be road opening permits, for instance, yeah, of the existing public ways. And we'll have to look at that chapter as well. Board of Health Regulations, 50.01 definitions, the, again, to the extent applicable, applicant requests a waiver from the bedroom count provisions set forth in the definitions of bedrooms. I don't, I don't really understand that one, that we had a discussion way back in the day about what was determined to be a bedroom and what wasn't vis a vis the, mostly as it related, I think, to the basements. But there were some ancillary rooms of offices and whatnot, so. What's that one about?
So I can explain that one, I think. Yeah, as probably most of you know, the Board of Health has several different definitions for the number of bedrooms. And we did talk about that back and forth a while ago. And I think it was just decided that we, that we would consider the bedroom as shown on the plan as the bedroom, as the number of bedrooms, rather than get involved with the square footage in the basement, counting the rooms and dividing by two and all that. That's my recollection. So the waiver is to those local Board of Health regulations that they have. So basically, we're asking you to approve the number of bedrooms that are shown on the plans that have been submitted to you.
But, but not count some of the other rooms that are titled sitting room or office that could be construed as a bedroom later.
Correct.
Did you do the calculations, Don, and does, if you go, I'm just curious, if you go with the Board of Health methodology, do you come up with a different number?
I think, well, way back, we did the calculations on, on, I think, some of them, especially the bigger houses. And I think at the end, it was about the same, because you can get, as you know, once you get nine rooms or more, you end up with more rooms and less bedrooms, even though you can actually have more bedrooms labeled on the plan. It's, you know, it kind of works both ways, depending on how many rooms you have in the house. So I, and I, so I, I think it came down to, you know, the plans are going to be reviewed, and, you know, whether you determine it's realistic on the number of bedrooms that are shown on the plan, then that's, that's how it would be approved. And again, these, the Board of Health Regulation of Bedrooms is more or less geared towards septic systems, you know?
Yeah.
So, almost, you know, shouldn't apply, so.
Yeah. So I guess we just need to determine if it's really applicable.
Yeah, if you want to apply the requirement or not.
Right.
I mean, just keep in mind on any of these, by them saying to the extent applicable, they're reserving their right to, to appeal that decision. Like, say, if you say, yeah, it's applicable, and we want to apply it.
Right.
You know, by them kind of leaving it open, then it gives them grounds to appeal you, to say, well, we wanted a waiver of that, you should have granted it. So you're going to have to make the substantive determination based on the record before you. And then, but they have the right to appeal any decision you make on each of these.
Of course.
Okay. Rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land on Nantucket Massi-, on Nantucket Island, Massachusetts. 2.03C, plans believed not to require, not to require approval, ANR. That require, waiver is not being requested any longer. Moving on, 2.0682, submission requirements. The requirement for street network plan showing adjacent streets and miscellaneous information. Wave street network plan is the waiver asked for. Why do you, why, why wouldn't you do that?
I just think the initial application didn't have it. Again, subdivision regulations would require this. I think if you recall, I mean, I recall, I don't expect anyone else to, but Chesty has said, you know, when he reviewed that waiver, that basically all the information is there anyway. That, that would, would have been required if we did that separate plan. Basically, it's just a separate plan as part of the set. But we think everything that was in the set has all the information that would have been on that plan.
Okay. So we can, we can refer to John Chesty's plan, I mean, commentary and look at that.
And, and Mr. Chairman, to the extent that you find you want to see that information, you could simply require it as part of the submittal of final plans post-permit. you could simply require it as part of the submittal of final plans post-permit.
2.0683, Submission Requirements. Requirement for executed Form B application, waive Form B application. Why?
Well, the Form B application is the application that goes to the planning board for the definitive plan, so we don't have that in this case, so that's more procedural, I would assume.
So, okay, so I'm gonna note, George, do you agree that that's more procedural? Okay. 2.06A8, Submission Requirements. Covenant or bond is required in accordance with... 2.06F, Performance Guarantee. They would like to waive any proposed covenant or bond. Uh, why?
Just skip that, okay.
Why do you think that?
Someone may have to help me out here, but I think you are gonna, you are gonna have to release all the lots, so that's sort of your, um, warranty or guarantee that, you know, the construction is going according to the plans. As you release lots, if this, rather than have a bond, you have the option of releasing the lots. You can stop releasing the lots if you feel that, you know, something needs to be changed, or something not done correctly, or there's not enough work that's been completed to get ready for the issuance of another building permit.
Okay, so if I'm hearing Don correctly, George, we, we don't, there is a mechanism that they're not asking for a release from, we got to check this, obviously, but that, uh, they're not...
I think this one you can just address during your deliberations.
Okay, we don't need any more info.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't had the opportunity to review the planning board regulation, but General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81U allows a planning board on a subdivision to require security pursuant to that statute, and certainly, it's appropriate for a board to include that as a condition of any approval, and we would be fine with that sort of condition.
You had asked about that at one point way back when, before I started on this, so we'll, we'll make some recommendations on that.
Okay.
I think, I think Jesse has addressed that, too.
Yeah, I just didn't know, do we need any more info?
No.
Doesn't sound like it. 2.0611, Submission Requirements. A site analysis report and map are required for definitive plan submissions. Wave site, the waiver request is wave site analysis report and map. I don't know that we need more info on that one. Am I supposed to speak about that?
It's the same as the site analysis plan. I think you have probably more information on this project than any other subdivision that's been done in the past, so.
I don't know about that, but, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna mark that as a little bit more procedural. Uh, okay, 2.06B4, Submission Requirements. Current zoning information required on each seat, sheet. Uh, waive placement of zoning information on the plan, and you've asked for a waiver. Why wouldn't you just put the information on the plan?
Well, because that relates to the current zoning district, Lug 2, and we don't want to record this plan with Lug 2 information, because we're showing the zoning information as, as asked for as part of the permit, with the lot areas and frontage and setbacks and so forth. I think that's pretty common. Um, you know, if it was a subdivision plan, it would be in Lug 2, and we'd have to list Lug 2 requirements. But in this case, you know, Lug 2, even though it isn't Lug 2, it's not applied here as part of the zoning setbacks and areas and that sort of thing.
So your plans will have the proposed zoning, it just won't have the zoning for Lug, for the Lug 1 district, is what you're saying?
Right, right.
Lug 2, which is what this is addressing.
Yeah.
I guess that's in this reason.
I mean, yeah, a lot of these are not, you don't really need more information from them on a lot of these.
Okay, moving on.
You want to, you want to try to get into more, like, the example of the ground cover requirement. All right, why are you?
Well, that's, that I would think we would get into our deliberations. We don't need any more info from them, per se.
They're saying substantive requirement that you have, that you know about that, you, you have a question about, on that, you think some information might be helpful. And also, I know others have given you information urging that you don't waive certain requirements, and, you know, so that would be...
Yeah, and we have all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just, yeah, I got it. 2.06B14, Submission Requirements. This is much the same, a landscape plan showing a location, size, and species of all proposed landscape planning, and B, location and size of existing trees to be preserved. Waive location and size of trees to be preserved. I mean, I don't think we need more info on that, the buffer is being preserved, and everything else is getting removed.
Well...
No?
Didn't they suppose, yeah, we can talk about it in preparation, I don't, I'm getting to it right now.
You don't, we don't need any more information. We, okay. 2.06B23, Submission Requirements. Plans shall contain notes relative to lot area compliance under zoning. Wave notes as to lot area requirements under zoning.
It's the same as above, essentially, isn't it?
I, I'm assuming, well, Don, is this basically the same as 2.06B4?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You know, one issue on, on all, on a few of these, including that one, you're, you know, if you think you have enough information, it's fine, but now you're getting into the substance of it. Like, in other words, are you, what lots are you seeking a waiver of the frontage requirements?
Yeah, yeah.
And so if you have enough information on that, you don't need more from them, but that's, that's the type of thing that you, you do want to be getting into the substance of it. All right, which lots, because your, your decision would condition that that way. Say you approved the, the plan with conditions, you would specify the lots that you're waiving the requirement on, and, you know, and there would have to be a justification for doing that, or you wouldn't be allowing it, so.
Wouldn't that go back to 13916 in 10, in that particular example, the intensity regulations?
Right.
And so we would talk about...
Same type of thing.
Yeah. I mean, here, yeah, it would be nice to, are you saying that we might want to have, I mean, I, I think the information's on the plan, it's just not in a chart form.
Right.
We just have to find it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you feel comfortable with it, but...
He indicates in some of his notes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find all six of them.
Okay. I mean, obviously, the more information would be better, but, uh, again, I, nothing is going to happen between now and 3:30.
No.
In terms of new information.
Just saying, if you had a particular question, you said, well...
Mr. Chairman, typically, when you're talking about a subdivision plan as part of a 40B like this, generally, you would get, you know, a waiver request that tells you what the minimum lot area requested is, what the minimum frontage is, minimum setbacks, for, you know, the smallest of each of the lots, but meanwhile, the information is shown on all the lots. So the waiver request is to allow a lot size as small as X square feet, as frontage as, you know, as small as...
Yeah, we're not gonna do that.
...how many feet, yeah.
We're not gonna do that. We, we want it to be specific that if you, if lot, I'm pulling this out of my head, 17 is undersized, or the frontage is inadequate, you have that, you know, that needs to be identified. We're not gonna give you a waiver that says you can pick and choose and change the plan. The plan is the plan.
Well, no, 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 I'm sorry, I wasn't suggesting that. What I was saying is the information is on the plan.
Yeah, I agree.
But what you usually don't do is provide a waiver list that says lot X is, because it gets really cumbersome. It's on the plan, and what we're letting you know is, you know, the waivers you're granting are up to a minimum lot area or a minimum frontage, or...
Well, we may be more specific, but we can get to that.
Can I just ask one question, because I think the waiver asks for six lots that have less than 50 feet of frontage? Can you? I think I count seven, I'm just curious.
I think there's only six. Um, so the, just to be clear, the way we set it up, if you look at that zoning table, you know, we specified a minimum 50 feet of frontage, with the exception of the following lots.
Okay, oh, here it is, I see it in the bottom, so 16...
Should be on the zoning table, and I think it would, they were listed in the waivers.
How about, yeah, 31, 32, and 41. What about 34? Oh, I see, the six, you add the six, and then it goes to 54. Sorry, that was my mistake.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, one, two, three, four...
Five, six.
Five, six. What about this one up in the corner, seven?
No, no, what's?
This one, way up in the corner.
That's lot 16, it's listed.
16.
16, 20.
21.
Yeah. 31.
What about, oh, third, I couldn't see it.
31 and 32.
30 is 50, I, I thought it wasn't, okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
We thought that was the cleanest way to do it, as far as separating.
It is. Of course I didn't read, and I couldn't see that little additional arrow that gave that 34 an extra seven feet, or six feet.
Yeah, the information's here, again, we're just gonna have to digest it now, and some give and take would have been nice, but we're not gonna do that. So, uh, where were we?
Wave staking for viewing?
Okay, Submission, uh, 2.06E, Submission Requirements. Stake and brush cut center line of road and lot corners at the road for viewing. Wave staking for viewing. I mean, does anybody see any great need for more information on that? No. 3.01 zoning. All lots shown on the plan shall comply with area frontage and other requirements of the Nantucket zoning bylaw. The waiver requested is wave dimensional compliance with zoning bylaw. I don't think we need more information, the plan clearly shows that. 3.02, Public Open Spaces. The board in some cases shall require a park or parks. The waiver requested is to waive public open spaces. I don't quite understand that. You have some public open spaces, why would there be a waiver requested? Are they not public? Good point, forgot that. These are private. Okay, so that is your, your intention, that no one, that they are private. No one else can go in and use the basketball court or...
No court left.
No court, yeah. I thought that was...
Yeah, there is.
There is.
Or, or the green space. For instance, if I'm a...
John, I presume that's correct?
Oh, I see, it's a half court. It's a support court up here, it's tiny.
Yeah, I believe that is correct. The intent is for this to be private.
And again, I would deem that substantive if we wanted to determine that you needed public spaces. Okay. 3.05, Protection of Natural Features. Due regard shall be shown for natural features. The waiver request is wave protection of natural features to the extent necessary. Why do you need that waiver?
I think it's a broad, um, regulate, regulation, it's not more specific than that, so, you know, it's up to interpretation, you know, the extent of protecting natural features.
Okay.
You know, obviously, the extent of the waiver request is to allow the construction of the development as shown on the plans.
3.06, One Dwelling Per Lot. Not more than one dwelling per lot without the consent of the planning board. Wave, the waiver request is wave limitation to one dwelling per lot for the condominium component. So...
And the duplex lots.
Yeah, some wave limitations, the new waiver, yeah, right, is wave limitation to one dwelling per lot for the condo and duplex lots. So, do we need any more info at this moment for that?
No.
Seems self, self-explanatory. 3.10, Street Systems Shall Conform To The Master Plan. Continuous in alignment with existing streets. Provisions for proper projection of streets and designed for convenient access for normal traffic and emergency vehicles. The waiver requested is wave street system provisions.
So that, I think we want to hear from the public, right, about the emergency vehicles and everything?
Well, we def, yeah, uh, okay, well, mark that one, if we can get to it, um...
It would be nice to know how this doesn't conform to that.
Yeah, what, what is it that they...
Can they tell us that?
Yeah.
Good question.
I think, um, one of the things about this section is I don't think anyone's been able to put their hands on a master plan, but we, we have designed this, um, you know, for fire truck access and so forth. In our opinion, you know, it's adequate for emergency vehicles. Other than that, if you go back to the subdivision regulations, I think that's pretty much what it says. I don't think it gets much more specific than that. I think, and again, in Jesse's report, he could not find any master plan. He might have, he might have made a comment on that as well.
Okay, so some of those things, we're just gonna have to delve into a little bit more, but...
Do you not have a master plan?
Me personally?
The town.
The town? I, I can't answer that question, I...
I thought we, I thought we did.
Is there a master plan?
Not that there's not a master plan, but related to the street network system.
All right.
Okay.
I, I would have found it very strange that you didn't have a master plan.
No, we have a master plan.
I have a master, of course I have a master plan. 4.02, Roadway Layout and Parcel Perimeter Monument. Concrete monuments shall be installed at roadway points and lot corners. The waiver requested as to, is to, to waive the roadway points and parcel monumentation. Again, I don't think we need more information, but I would ask why you think that's reasonable?
The, the plan shows concrete bounds and markers to establish the right of way in the roads at all the curves, in roundings and so forth. This was probably asked originally as, um, cost savings, or that these would be established during the house constructions, during the house construction itself, so.
What would be?
Staking the lot lines, identifying lot lines and so forth.
But not necessarily perimeter monumentation per lot?
Correct, that, that's what was originally asked for, so that's up to you, I suppose, I want to handle that.
Well, yeah, probably mostly up to us, but, uh, so what you're saying, Don, is the plan, once I get into it in greater detail, has the roadway points, they will be monumented.
Correct.
And that's just shown on the plan. Right now, the plan does not show parcel monumentation.
Correct.
So that's the only request that you would be really asking for at this point?
Correct.
Okay. 4.03 Streets. Secondary and minor street layout should be 40 feet wide. The waiver request is wave street width requirement to 30 feet for proposed minor roads. Uh, I'm assuming you're referring to Road V, or no, only C? Which ones are 30?
Uh, yeah, two roads. I think, is that C, and that's D, I think? Yeah, so, again, that straddles the 30-foot wide sewer easement. And in both cases, um, you know, well, this has, has, has two lots. There's not as, as much room required for utilities and so forth for just two properties at the end. And in this case, we provide an easement along the back, so we don't need to use that roadway width for that. We're also not proposing sidewalks in these areas, so we felt that the 30-foot was appropriate in those two sections. Everything else is 40 feet.
Okay. 4.09, when I say okay, by the way, to the public, just to let you know, this doesn't mean we agree to all this. We're just going through this list. We're gonna have to go through this again. 4.03 Streets, second, no, we just did that. 4.09 Shoulders. Four-foot shoulders required from outside treated road surface. The waiver request, well, the waiver will not, would not be requested. Okay, so you're withdrawing that one. 4.16 Landscaping. Specific landscape plan requirements. Let me just go back for one second and ask you a question, George. Now, when they don't ask for the waiver, let's say on 4.09 Shoulders, and for some reason, either the plan doesn't show the four-foot shoulder, or it's not built with the four-foot shoulder, what happens?
Well, you're, like I said, you're gonna specify which, if any, waivers you're granting.
So they would have to comply with this?
Yes, and then you're gonna, well, you're gonna have a provision in there that's gonna be a catch-all that all other...
I got you. Okay, thank you. I got you. Okay, thank you. Landscaping, four-point-sixteen, specific landscape plan requirements, waive requirements of planting new trees. All it says is waiver to the, well, no, I'm sorry, waiver to the extent necessary to comply with final landscaping plans. What is the extent necessary to comply with the final landscaping plan? Again, we have to look through the plan and look through the bylaw. Can you give us any more info at this time?
I think you do have a pretty detailed landscaping plan right now that I would assume would meet the typical requirements for landscaping in this situation. But I didn't prepare the landscaping plan, so I don't know if there's anything specific that...
So you have no more information on that. Okay. Four-point-one-eight, sidewalks, sidewalks, I mean, specific sidewalks installed both sides of roadway. The waiver requested is to install sidewalks on one side of roadway. I mean, again, I don't know that we need more info. I assume the landscape plant calls out the materials and whatnot?
Yes, yes, it does.
I mean, I looked at it, but not in great detail last night, so we can get into, George, we can obviously condition that. It has to be X, Y. Okay. Four-point-one-nine, bicycle pass. Bicycle pass shall be required. The waiver request is for bicycle pass as sidewalks are proposed on one side of the roadway. We need more info on that? No. Anybody?
Well, kind of, does it not contradict the previous one that says waiver requested to install sidewalks on one side of roadway?
Well, it...
Says they're gonna do sidewalks. Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry.
You good?
Yeah.
Streetlights are required, four-point-one, four-point-two-zero, streetlights. Streetlights are required as is designated by the planning board. They would like to waive streetlights, same way were requested. Is that still the case? There are no streetlights on these plans?
There are. There are.
Yeah, they are on the landscaping plan, not on the place, but...
So the waiver would not be required?
Correct.
I hope someone else has taken notes to all this, in fact, too. My notes aren't sketchy. Four-point-two-one, bridges. They don't need that. That's been withdrawn. Four-point-two-four, driveway aprons. Not gonna be requi, I mean, the waiver would not be required. They're going to meet that. Okay, so there we are on getting whatever information we could on the waivers. So how does everyone feel? Go to the public if you want to speak specific. I think what would be most helpful, you can say whatever you want, but I think what would be most helpful is if you also have questions about additional information that could be provided right now in the next, you know, thirty-five minutes or so, while the applicant can still speak to things, that would be helpful. So, does anybody want to speak? No. Oh, yes.
I never want to miss an opportunity to speak if invited to speak. What I want to say is that you've been talking about how you're gonna condition this and how you're gonna condition that. I'm here to say that you should deny this because there are no conditions that you can provide for that would make this project work for the island. I wanted to point out to you that you have a hundred and twelve letters from your community asking you to deny this project. Also want to point out, the recent defeat at the ballot of the roundabout and the surfside area improvements tells you where the community stands here. We're gonna ask you to stand with the residents of the town, to vote your heart, not what you're being told you have to do. As I have sat here through the hearings, I've heard you get a lot of advice. I think a lot of it is pro-development. We don't agree with the advice. We think that there is sufficient grounds to uphold a denial. On behalf of the tipping group people whom I represent, I think we all appreciate the work that you've done, the hours that you've put into it, but we don't want to be forced into suing you. And that's what would happen if you grant this project. We'd rather be your ally and not have to be your adversary. In terms of the grounds to deny, I want to point out to you the latest letter from Weston and Sampson. You may not have seen it yet. It just came in today. It's some pretty strong language. They are saying that what the developer is proposing doesn't work. And the developer is saying they don't want to do what the town is telling them to do. There still are water issues. With regard to stormwater, you have a whole bunch of conditions proposed by John Cheshy, Chesia, if I got that name right. Those conditions, I had to laugh when I was reading them because it would remind me of one of my kids coming to me and saying, "Would you pay for some transportation for me?" And the kid comes with a bicycle that has two wheels and a handlebar. And I respond by saying, "Yeah, I'll pay for it if it has four tires, four doors, a steering wheel, an engine, a trunk." That's what Chesia is saying in terms of his conditions. To give you an example, the stormwater standards from DEP says that before you do leaching fields, you have to do perk tests. You've got a set of plans that shows you all these stormwater solutions with all these leaching fields, but they haven't done the perk tests that are required. So it's all nice as a piece of theory, but there's no reality to it. So Chesia says, "Well, you could come up with a condition that says comply with state requirements." But that's not what this project is doing. That's requiring the car for a bicycle project. There still are the environmental issues that are out there. There still is no traffic solution. The roundabouts that are necessary. The island's not gonna build those roundabouts. If you don't have the roundabouts, you've got insufficient infrastructure for the project that they're proposing. The restrictions that they're proposing to make these, some of these units for islanders, in the packet is a wonderful letter from Tucker Holland. He goes through that and shows you essentially they're no good. It's in the latest submissions that probably nobody's had a chance to look at, but please take a look at that. The whole purpose of this project is supposed to help Nantucketers, and your housing consultant is telling you it's full of holes. We also put into the record the pro forma financial statement that we obtained by public records requests for the applicant, showing that they're making a profit of twenty-four million, twenty-three million, three hundred, twenty-three million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So when they say a project is uneconomic because you have asked for reductions of this and reductions of that, the project's not made uneconomic. While you haven't called for the production of financial statements, they have repeatedly said, "We can't give you the kind of changes because it would render the project uneconomic." When you have a profit margin of twenty-four million, there's a little room in there for them to give you a lot more than you're getting, and a lot more than you've asked for. So please don't be snookered on that. So for these reasons, and on behalf of so many people on Nantucket, we ask you to deny this project. Stand with the people of Nantucket. Don't put yourself in a position of being contrary to your own friends, neighbors, and community.
May I quickly respond to some of the comments about the drainage?
Sure.
Okay. Jesse did submit a report last night, and I think if you go through that report, you'll see based on the hundred-unit plan, which has the same drainage systems that we're proposing under the new plan, that it does comply with DEP requirements. Obviously, he didn't have time to look at all the numbers, but that would still have to be done. The issue about the test pits, we did six or seven test pits throughout the site. We know, we're confident what the soil conditions are on the site. It is technical requirement. When we know the final locations of the drainage systems, we will be doing test pits to confirm those at that time. And that's not unusual, even with subdivisions in the town, that that be done prior to construction, you know, given the location, the soil conditions that we know are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Patrick Tafe. While I was sitting here, I read the Weston and Sampson peer review letter regarding the sewer connection. And the letter repeatedly talks about how much information is not included and not provided. It talks about our twenty-inch, sixteen-inch, and twelve-inch sewer mains and how fragile they are. And if this project were to go forward, I'm just wondering if we did have another catastrophic failure in our downtown, would any of that burden be shared with Josh Posner and Jamie Feely? Would they take responsibility for the adverse effects to our existing sewer lines if they do not follow a recommended gravity feed to the sewage treatment plant? And because of this, I'm just respectfully asking the board to please deny the project. The cost to the taxpayers is way too great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda Durensis, Five Gladlands. I've sat through these meetings for almost a year, and I appreciate all your work. And as you said, ask questions because the applicant is here. But we've asked millions of questions, and they haven't been answered. And even as today, they're still not answered. So asking more questions, you know, saying that we know what's on the site because we didn't, you haven't done all the leaching, which is required, but that's...
Just speak to me, not at him, please.
Okay, okay. Sorry. But it's like the bats. The town was asked, could we get on and do an endangered species? Now that's in court by the town and by land council because they don't agree with what the developer said. And really, when you sit and look at this project, what you need to remember is the only reason that we're sitting looking at a ninety-two unit project is because two developers, who their last forty B was smaller, now it's bigger, and I would assume the next one is gonna be bigger, is because they came in with a hundred and fifty-six units. This isn't something that you guys all said, "Hey, you're trying to find a compromise and work things out," but ninety-two units, as Weston and Sampson said, they can't take it. Our sewer structure can't take it. There's, we're on an island. There's a finite amount of stuff that you can do to an island, and this is bigger than anything we can handle. And also, we keep hearing about if you go to hack, you're gonna lose, and if you do this, but at some point, Nantucket is gonna have to stand up and say, "Enough. We can't do this. It's gonna cost the taxpayers too much money." And if not now, when are we gonna stand up? So I would respectfully ask you to deny this project because it's just too big. We can't afford it.
Thank you.
See you all in Delcourt. First of all, I just have to ask, because when I've permitted things before, if I don't have all my pieces of paper in order, if I don't have all the information that's required, I get sent away. So I don't understand why this application wasn't sent away until it was complete. Understand it was a process to get to a point, and there was some arbitration that went back and forth, but I don't understand the process being different for them and not for everybody else. I'd ask you to respectfully deny the project for all the reasons that everyone else has stated. I agree with that. It's gonna get litigated. If the board can't find itself clear after all this work you've put in to deny the project, I'd ask for you to put extreme restrictions to not grant any waivers to address the sewer issues. The report from the sewer engineers was staggering. Key words in it, impacting operations, not, do not recommend, concerned with the structural conditions of the existing, not, we wouldn't recommend it to be connected, main sewer failure, adverse impact. You're asking that as two people get rich off of the welfare of an entire island. To me, it's outrageous. It's a slap in the face to you. It's a slap in the face to the island. And to me, I don't think it's, it's, it has anything to do with what this island is about. But I'd ask you not to grant parking waivers, not to grant setbacks, or change the frontage requirements. I think it poses safety problems. The bedroom count, that's just an absolute joke to call it a bedroom. I can call it seventeen other things, but it becomes a bedroom, and then there's twelve cars in front of one house. So the problems that I see this creating requires huge restrictions on your part as a board. I thank you for your time and your patience with all of this.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mindy Levin. I had two questions. One, in previous meetings, I've heard people from the fire department say that fire trucks couldn't turn around in there, and I was unclear if that was fixed. I also am wondering if I'm right in the understanding that the affordable units are more expensive per square foot than the market value houses? And in terms of being a resident of thirty years here and paying taxes, we're gonna have to, the people who live here and the taxpayers are gonna have to pay to increase the sewer and the water to accommodate the high-density housing. And I said this in a previous meeting, that some of us, myself included, who live more down south from this project, aren't on sewer or water. And I don't want to... And I don't want to use up all the capacity for our current sewer and water for high-density housing that isn't here yet, when people who already live here aren't even hooked up yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Sean Perry, 14 South Shore Road. I'd ask that the board denies all waivers on the basis that these two should be held to build to our community's minimum standards. I'd also ask that you listen to the directors of the town departments and their advisors, the peer reviews, in saying that this is not feasible, this is not correct, we don't have the capacity. Please deny this project.
Thank you.
Mindy Levin again. If this goes to the state, does the state consider these letters that have been submitted? And will the state look at the letters from the affordable housing from Tucker Holland and from the land council that was just submitted? Do they look at those letters?
George?
They will look at whatever is submitted by the parties to the appeal. So if the developer appeals, the board would submit certain evidence, prefiled testimony with documentation. Surfside would do the same. Parties have the right to seek intervention. So if they weren't happy with what's being submitted by the parties, they could seek intervention and submit their own documents as well.
What does seeking intervention mean?
Basically, a party saying that they're a party interested in these proceedings, and we want to intervene in this.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's not a case where it's a record review. It's on new evidence. So it's whatever the parties to the proceedings submit will be considered.
So we could submit those letters?
To the board, yes.
Go ahead, George.
I thought the question was, on what's already been submitted, is that all considered by the Housing Appeals Committee?
Can I answer that question?
No, I'm in the middle of an answer.
Right. Let's just, the back and forth thing, the bottom line, if I'm hearing George correctly, is that yes, if there's an interested, if one of the parties introduces evidence and introduces all the letters, or whatever they deem to be evidence for their case, yes, the state, I would assume, would look at them.
Right. But somebody asked, I'm saying, it's not a record review.
No, I understand. It's a new process. They don't just take this whole record and go from there.
So you could submit those letters as part of your package to the state?
I don't know what you mean by "you."
If you're saying "you," the board.
You, the board, the ZBA board. If they turn this down and it goes to the state, somewhere there's something that is submitted to the state, and I'm wondering if those letters get included. And that's your decision, from what I understand him to say. You decide what, as a board, what gets submitted to the state for review.
For the board's case.
Right.
Yeah. Briefly, because we only have a few more minutes.
If we file an appeal to Superior Court, it's a record review, contrary to what was just said.
Okay, George, we're not getting into all of the ins and outs of what happens afterward. We're trying to get from here to there, and then what happens afterward happens.
If there's an appeal to... I'm in the middle of speaking, George.
No.
George, I'm in the middle of speaking.
Paul, come on.
Let me finish. The lady asked, "What gets considered by the Housing Appeals Committee?" And I answered that. Don't make up a different question and say that I'm wrong, okay? A 48, Section 17 appeal is separate. That's to Superior Court. That's not what she asked.
Okay.
If I could finish?
No. I'd like to hear the public speak about their concerns.
We don't have to get into the ins and outs of what's going to happen next. We don't know, okay? We don't know where the board's coming down, whether it's going to be a denial, whether it's going to be an approval, or whether it's going to be an approval with conditions. So let's not talk about everything that might happen.
Those are strategic conversations to have with your clients later. Right now, the public, this is the public's last chance to speak.
So please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land Council. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you and the rest of the board for the time you've spent reviewing this project over the last year. We submitted a final comment letter that is in your packet, and one of the things that I will just call your attention to is a specific request that if the board does issue a permit for this project, that you include a requirement or condition that all of the issues relative to rare endangered species habitat be resolved prior to additional disturbance and the commencement of construction on the site. I believe Mr. Chesia included a similar suggestion in his letter, that it would be appropriate to allow Natural Heritage to finish their process first. As you know, the select board on behalf of the town and the land council are currently involved in an appeal of their decision. And then I would just invite with me today Barbara Carbone, one of our attorneys from Huggins and Witten, is here, and I would just ask her to make a brief remark for you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Barbara Carbone for the Nantucket Land Council. I have attended a couple of these hearings, but I just would, of course, defer to Attorney Pucci on all subjects. The only comment I'd offer the board is this, and this is based on my experience advising cities and towns, ZBAs on 40Bs for many years, I think even longer than Attorney Haverty. The board does have authority to impose conditions. The board has authority to deny waivers.
Can you just get a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, I apologize. My apologies. I, I'll just be, I'll be brief, because I know the board wants to hear from members of the public. Just to reiterate that the board does have authority to deny waivers. It does have authority to impose whatever conditions it finds are consistent with local needs. That is the touchstone of 40B, consistency with local needs, and that includes all the subjects that the town's consultants and the departments and members of the public have raised. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth Spleen, and thank you to all the board members. This has been a grueling process, a disappointing process, and you have been steadfast, and I really appreciate that. I want to speak, as this is the last time to speak, again, about the traffic reports, the traffic studies. I spoke at an earlier meeting and pointed out the traffic studies looked at traffic at the intersections north of the project. They looked at Surfside Road, they looked at Fairgrounds Road, they looked at Old South Road, and so forth. However, they did not address the traffic south of the project. South Shore Road is a one-way street. Surfside is its only egress. There are six or seven minor streets that run off of South Shore Road. They are also one-way streets, and Surfside is their only egress. With the number of cars proposed to come pouring out of this proposed development, it's going to be like you put a cork in a bottle, and the residents south of this project on South Shore Road and the auxiliary streets are at risk. I've had conversations recently with my friends over at Sherbin Commons. They're not apt to come to the meeting, but they have got the same worries as I have. Now, when Sherbin Commons was built, we welcomed it to the neighborhood. We advocated for it. So our neighborhood is not one that wants to deny projects. That was a project that was doing good for our community. There are a lot of elderly people over there, and I count myself as an elderly person living at 11 South Shore Road. Part of the reason that Sherbin Commons was built there was easy access to the hospital, to doctors' offices. I don't know what's going to happen with the amount of traffic that's proposed here, creating a bottleneck for people at Sherbin Commons and other places down the road when they try to get out to an important doctor's appointment, to an emergency, at the emergency I think I'm out of words. I think you have a tough job, but I would ask you to deny. I've tried very, very hard to see some good in this and to see the, you know, the modifications. It is just too much. Our well is 10 feet from that southern border. It will be contaminated in no time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Diane Cabral, 8 South Shore Road. I was going to say much of what Mary Beth said. Safety has been my biggest issue the whole time. I've said time and again that I'm concerned about the one means of egress, but I also want to make sure that our wells are, remain clean, and do they have a plan for, make sure that the plan is accurate and to treat the water, any storm drain water, to make sure that that, that our wells stay good and clear. And I'm concerned about pressure, make sure there's enough pressure for fire hydrants. And I would like to hear from the fire chief, if he's here, to see what his thoughts are on the turning and all of that. In the past, we had a fireman here who was concerned about that, and I just want to make sure that you have all that info. And I thank you so much for everything that you have done and will continue to do. The one good thing that has come out of it is we're a neighborhood in Lug 2, so we're in a heavily wooded area, and we worry about fire. But we don't always know our neighbors well because we've been sort of protected. And this process has enabled us to get together as a neighborhood, and I'm grateful for that. It wasn't part of our master plan to be here, but I am grateful for that and your help. Thank you.
I like the silver lining. Okay.
Jacques Sinicki, Butter. I'm not conversant with the latest email from John Chestney saying that the stormwater system now complies, but I read through the documentation that was provided yesterday, and I cannot see how it does pass the state's stormwater standard. I have lots of questions about it. Any number of specifications weren't given in any report on the new type of systems that they are proposing. Any number of things aren't certified. And in speaking towards the Wellhead Recharge District, impervious surface provision with protecting our aquifer, not putting pollutants into the aquifer, so far, any system that has been proposed by the developers catastrophically fails to do that. And as a butter with, I believe my well is maybe 20 feet away from their property line and actually directly downstream of their, some of their proposed infiltration systems, I have no doubt that within a short period of time, my well is going to be polluted with all sorts of things that it's not polluted with now. And so I would ask the board even to take that into consideration and deny this application for myself and my kids. My kids, hopefully, are going to live on that property, and I really don't want them drinking town water because, because the system next door's polluted their water. And there's really no recourse. I don't believe we're allowed to go back and sue Mr. Posner, Mr. Feely, when our wells become polluted, or the town in Nantucket. We just sort of have to live with it at that point. So thank you very much for your consideration and...
Thank you. Jacques, real quickly, you're on Werowero?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yep.
My name is Bob Lang. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the entire board. I'm a resident of Nantucket for 45 years, and I've seen a lot of development and a lot of traffic increase over the years. I'm a resident of Surfside, Masquod Avenue. Just, I frequently walk to the bus stop at Fairgrounds Road and Surfside Road. And even in the off-season, I've had an opportunity to sit there on the bench waiting for the bus and observe the amount of traffic that's here in the off-season. My concern today is about public safety, primarily the pedestrians and bicyclists that go through that intersection. As traffic increases over the years, we have wisely tried to encourage people to use bicycles and fewer motor vehicles. I've seen, I've been to a number of the hearings on this project, and I've seen the studies done on traffic. I don't agree with the process by which they were done, in all cases. What I think that they have failed to address is the number of people that need to cross the street at these intersections. If we were to install roundabouts or rotaries, we would be eliminating the stop signs that would make it even more perilous. As a matter of public safety, you know, Surfside's a very busy beach, a very popular area. We do see a lot of pedestrian and bicycle and skateboard activity coming through that intersection, and I would, you know, humbly ask you to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just very briefly, I rushed through my comments before earlier, and I just...
We appreciated that.
Sorry. So I'll try, I will try to be brief. I just neglected to mention that my firm, we are a municipal law firm, we represent cities and towns. I have spent a lot of time advising boards on 40Bs, and for good measure, I'm on this ZBA where I live, so I sit where you sit, and I've grappled with many of these projects myself. I just want to address one aspect of what the applicant is asking you for, which is a plan waiver. The applicant is asking you to approve these plans and saying, when they ask for relief to the extent necessary, what they're asking for is approve these plans, and to whatever extent they don't comply with the regulations, that's the relief we're getting. And so I would very strongly urge the board to deny a plan waiver, which is what the applicant seeks. I'm glad the chair went through that exercise of going through all of the, all the regulations for which they are and aren't requesting relief, because it really shows you how much you don't know. And while you have that, you know, copy, that page up there, they're saying approve these plans. We're not going to tell you exactly how much it doesn't comply, and we're not going to tell you how much relief we want, but approve these plans. So on behalf of the council, I would just ask you, whatever decision the board reaches, that it does not grant a plan waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One more.
I'd like to hear from the fire chief.
Okay, but we're wrapping this up very soon.
You have a 4-4.
Yeah. Is the fire's chief, wait, Pat?
He's here.
Okay.
Bobby.
Go ahead, Pat.
Thank you. Patrick Tafe, I've just been asked to read something into the record. It's a Tucker Holland letter. I don't know if you all had a chance to see it.
We have. We got it. It's in the record.
You're not going to let me read it?
No. It's in the record. I mean, I, we have to wrap this up, unfortunately. And you've spoken.
Briefly, I want to correct what I said. I called South Shore Road a one-way street. It is a dead-end street.
Thank you.
We understand. Can we get the fire chief?
Yeah, let's hear from the fire chief briefly and see if he has any commentary, comments.
We're going to let him speak first.
Good afternoon. Robert Bates, deputy chief, Nantucket Fire. We had, back in June of 2018, we had submitted a letter that had addressed many of the concerns of the original layout. As I look at this layout, I have concerns as to parking, which were addressed in our first one. There are concerns as to our ability to go around this circle in these developments. We had requested minimums of 20-foot roadways with traveling space. All the parking had to be outside of that. I don't know that it's addressed in this plan because I, we haven't really had a chance to really view this. We had addressed trees and vegetation, which they were looking to, because some of the buildings we had no access to, if they started putting trees in front of them. As for the, we had asked for no on-street parking in any roadway below 20 feet. It appears that potentially some of those roadways would not allow us to have a 20-foot right-of-way if they were parking on them. Without being able to really go through this, I don't know of our ability to get our vehicles around that big curve in the back, or to access some of those properties off the smaller roads. I'd need more time to see this and actually go through it and take some measurements and everything.
All right, Bob, let me ask you some questions, because we're under some severe time constraint here. What should we be looking for? 20-foot open roadways?
We need a 20-foot open roadway, so no parking that would restrict that.
Yeah, I understand that.
I can give you a copy of this, which we requested before. There was concerns over vegetation, the trees and stuff that would grow in front of the homes, which if there was, if you have anything that's on-street, a tree that's growing like at a parking space was one of the things they were trying to review. A tree that grows up past the parking space, then we can't access the building with our ladder truck. It restricts our access. We can't get multiple emergency vehicles in front of many of these homes, the way they're set back. The smaller roads, we would never be able to get multiple trucks in there. Initially, they had, this had addressed the apartment condo building parking, which had limited, really limited us.
I have one other question.
And we had asked for final fire department access plans, so we could submit them for review and approval, which is required under 527 CMR.
And what about the question about the pressure and the hydrants?
Pressure and the hydrants, we haven't seen a layout for hydrants for this new subdivision yet. Pressure for hydrants, we'd have to defer to the water company for what the volume and what the pressures that's available in there. I know that in the initial review, we had stated that that is the same system that feeds the hospitals, the schools, things like that. So I don't know availability of water without referring to the water company.
Bob, are those notes from your previous?
This is actually the, this is a copy of the original submission.
Yeah, so we have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
What were you saying about, I'm sorry, the final fire, something final fire plan?
Under 527 CMR 18.1.3.1, we need to have final access plans for review and approval.
Which is, is that a state regulation?
Yes.
So they would have to comply with that.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say, is that's a state law?
Yeah, we get it, we get it.
So early on in this process, someone, a fireman as a citizen, brought up the point that there might be issues with actually fighting a fire of this magnitude with the buildings.
It is actually addressed, it's addressed in this document also. It says, "This development places an overwhelming responsibility in the fire department if an emergency was to arrive. The potential fire load of one empty apartment building would require 5,200 gallons of water per minute to extinguish and an impossible mark to meet from the start. The potential impact on other facilities must also be determined. Many fire protection systems of critical facilities such as the hospital, schools, are in place on the same water main. Any potential effects to these critical infrastructures must be determined by a hydraulic study of the system."
Okay, and just as a follow-up, could that be resolved by getting more equipment, more firemen? Would we have that ability?
What we need for that is we need to have water. The water availability is the thing. Early notification is key, is huge to any fire. But the apartment buildings, the initial apartment buildings that this was addressed to at that time were quite large. I don't know if the apartment buildings are the same size, because I haven't seen them yet.
They're slightly smaller.
But we would have the manpower?
We have a very limited manpower. We only have 26 fire, full-time firefighters on the island with 10 to 15 on-call personnel.
Okay.
Okay, good to keep moving. Ron, keep it brief, please.
Okay, I just hope you'll deny it. Nantucket was a beautiful historic island. They should have never had any 40Bs here in the first place. And you can see what happened to the harbor already with all the pollution that's gone in there from the drains in the streets. There's no way that this should ever be approved to make two people happy to make some money. This is an historic island. You were destroying it, and this will be the one that did it completely, and it'll be done for.
Thank you.
So I hope you consider it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll be just as brief. Judy Zerheidi, Fulcher Avenue. I just want to say thank you for all your time. This has been terrible for all of us. And please deny.
Thank you.
Please deny, thank you.
Okay, so I think we're there. Unless the applicant wants to extend the public hearing.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Got to ask.
I do want to thank the board, though. I understand that this is a very difficult process. As Attorney Garbone said, she serves on the board. I have also served on a board of appeals on a very contentious 40B matter. I understand that the pressures that are placed upon a board in that circumstance, and I appreciate everything that the board's done through this process.
Thank you. Okay. George, you look like you were getting on.
Nope.
You're good. Okay, so I will say, I think the, I hope, and I believe that the board understands what we need, how we need to proceed. We know that we have options. I don't think somebody got up there and said that we, I think it was Paul, said that we're being told that we have to do something. I don't think any of us feel that way. I think we're trying, we did our best to get as much information as we can, and we'll start the next step, which is deliberations with the information that we have. And we understand that we have options. We could deny it outright. We could approve it. We can approve it with conditions. So I think everybody is good with that. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so having said that, the applicant does not want us to continue, does not want to continue the public hearing. We do not have any leverage in that matter at this point, so I'm going to be looking, I mean, I can make the motion, right? Good. We're going to make a motion to close the public hearing. The extension for the rendering, the decision has already been signed, but, so we have that in hand, so we have adequate time to hopefully deliberate. Just to be clear, once the public hearing is closed, there is no public or applicant participation in our deliberations. We have help with our consultant and with George, our counsel, but nobody else gets to talk and nobody participates. Now, you can't, it is a public meeting, so anybody can come and listen, but you just can't participate. Just to let everyone know. So are we good with me making a motion?
Under duress, sure.
Under duress. It's a fair statement. I mean, I'm going to...
Can I just make one last comment?
Absolutely.
Just hearing from the deputy fire chief there, that they have not been able to have adequate time to review and comment on these plans, sorry, makes me, I don't understand how you wouldn't allow the fire department, who takes care of the safety for all of us, of these people that you say that you want to help on Nantucket. They don't have the, we don't have the information from them if they could get in there and save someone or help someone that's in a fire. You can say what you want, but I just, I just think it's a disservice to the process as well.
Let me, go ahead, Paul.
The fire department has a role in the review of plans before a building permit is issued. Under state law, they get to review this for adequate fire access, and they will provide whatever response to that that they do. We can't avoid that process, and it's on us if we have to make changes to accommodate that.
I'm going to throw one more idea out there, and it's not necessarily an original idea. Somebody suggested that the date for rendering the decision was extended to July, I mean, June, July, yeah, June 10th. What, do you have a, it seems that we could still use information mostly from town departments in terms of fire, safety, et cetera. Would the applicant have any interest, at least considering the notion of keeping the date for rendering the decision as June 10th, but extending the public hearing to one more meeting? So to give time for people to actually review this plan.
And I understand, you know, Mr. Chairman, that you would like to have that opportunity, but we've had this discussion with my clients, and they think that now is the appropriate time to end the public comment period of this process.
And we can't, they can't even submit a report, nothing, nothing can come in from anybody else.
No. Correct. We can't take any more...
You can't. The applicant could agree to have the fire department submit, they could agree to have certain specific additional information.
If the board is comfortable with a process in which it closes the public hearing but allows the submittal of a particular report from the fire department, we don't have a problem with that. What we're not going to get into is a process where we're having another hearing and all sorts of additional public comment. But certainly, I don't think it impacts the process to allow the submittal of a report from a specific entity on a specific issue.
All right, so with that in mind, do we have to identify those specific entities and specific issues at this point?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we at least go with the fire department?
And whatever information he needs from the water department about the pressure for the hydrants, the amount of water.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
Sewer?
The sewer? No.
I don't think there's any need for additional submittals on the sewer. We pretty much covered that today. If there is additional information with regards to availability of water and there's something ready to be submitted into the record, that shouldn't be a problem either.
All right, you know, again, what's that?
They have a year to...
Yeah, that don't, thank you, I appreciate that, but it's not really very helpful. Okay, so I can make the motion.
So just the fire department? And whatever information he needs from the water.
Hydrology and hydraulic pressure.
So it would be the submittal of information with regard to fire access and with availability of public water?
Water for fighting fire.
Water for fighting the fires. The flow that he suggested he needed, 5,200 gallons per minute.
Okay. We good?
Yep.
Jim, you ready to vote?
Could I state an objection and a request?
An objection to what?
If you're going to open the record to allow something to come in, we'd like an opportunity to comment on that particular thing, that is, the public. What you're doing is excluding any public comment. I understand that. But if a new piece of evidence comes in from the fire department, why can't...
Okay, let's keep it simple. Let's keep it simple. No more new information.
Yeah, because they won't give us, they're not going to give us anymore.
All right, and let's, done. Does that, does that help you out, Paul? I don't get it. I really don't, but...
It doesn't make any sense at all. The purpose of that was to submit some further information in the interest of public safety.
I agree with you.
Deputy Fire Chief.
Do I have to be worried about Mr. Durensis's objection?
No, I would, I would accept the applicant's assent to the submission of that fire report, notwithstanding Mr. Durensis's objection.
We all good with that?
I am good with that.
I am, but it's important.
Okay, so we're back to square one. We're back to, you're good with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing at the insistence of the applicant, despite the ZBA's interest in continuing the public hearing. I move.
I'll second.
All right, so I made the motion, we'll just, to make it easier, at least a second of it.
Oh, sorry.
So only five of us are voting, correct? Or do we all vote?
What do you mean, do we all?
Well...
Two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, I know, okay. I mean, normally, the ZBA has five regular members. We all sit here and deliberate. I'm asking.
That's a new one on me. I thought you were all voting members. That's why it came up.
We are all voting members, but we can all sit and deliberate and then...
I can vote, and if at some point in time, if you're hearing, one of you who voted is not there, but the other was sitting, that person can take the seat.
Right. That's how we were told to operate years ago.
Yeah, let's just vote on the motion about the closing of the public hearing, and then we can address that later, vote.
Who voted?
On this decision.
So five people will vote today?
Yeah, that's all.
That's fine.
But, or can all six of us vote? I prefer all six.
Just do it, we don't have...
I didn't know about this customary practice you had, so just vote this by five members today.
Got it, okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you do vote, I just wanted to ask if you want to schedule a deliberation session before or after you vote?
I've been told that it's not necessary, but we were going to next.
Okay, thank you.
Correct? It's not necessary.
Yes, but I would recommend you do it, so the public knows.
Before we close the public hearing?
No, no.
Right.
So should we make a motion? We made the motion, we seconded it.
You seconded it.
Should we vote?
Yeah.
Who's voting?
Well, the regular members are Lisa, Susan, myself, Karam, and Jeff or Jim. Doesn't matter to me. Jim, you want to vote?
Sure.
Okay. This does not preclude Jeff from participating in any future deliberations. Correct?
I thought you were a six-member board.
No.
We're a five-member board.
Right, no, Jeff can...
And/or vote on something later on. If, again, I go somewhere...
If I never come back to my meeting.
And Jeff can take my place, right? Yes. That's always been our understanding.
Yes, let's just address that another time.
Okay, yeah, we're good. All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay, so let's pick a date for the next meeting. I'm looking at my phone only for the calendar, not text.
Is it going to happen, can't happen next week because Susan's gone?
Well, I might, I'll probably be back Thursday, Friday.
Okay, I already assumed you weren't here.
I leave Monday, so it would have to happen over the weekend.
You leave Monday when?
I...
22nd.
Okay, let me get my bearings here.
Pretty early. I mean, I have a meeting in the morning, so I leave at 2:00 in the afternoon.
The attendants aren't doing it today. So Lisa, you're gone the 22nd to the 5th, right?
Yeah.
Basically, the 6th, those two weeks.
Yeah.
Susan, for all intents and purposes, you're going next week. So I specifically looked at the week and asked Ed and George to look at the week of the 6th, because I'm gone the 14th to the 17th. So the days that rooms were, then you have the whole room availability thing. So the winner seemed to be Friday, May 10th.
Wow.
If the room is available all day, and since, again, there is no public participation, and I hate to do this, but I think we should start early and, you know, try to get as much done as we can in a marathon session.
When you say early, what are you thinking? Three, four?
No, I mean, one. I was saying one, you know, if we can do one to seven kind of thing, eight if we're just really feeling it.
Two?
Two. Two? We don't have to decide the certain times, sir.
Why don't you go? Why don't you just...
Okay, okay, I'm with you.
It'd be nice if, I don't know, it's just one is early.
One does come early.
One comes early, okay.
It does, just if something comes up and you're trying to finish it.
Yeah, and you're trying to finish it, I mean...
Believe me, it came early today. I'm with you.
I was racing around.
Okay. I was just, so 2:00 Friday, the 10th?
Do you realize your regular meeting's the day before?
I do. Unfortunately, it's a room thing and a schedule thing and...
Do you want to just continue, oh, we can't continue the day before after our regular meeting?
No, we can do it on Thursday, but then that starts at 1:00. No idea about the agenda.
And no idea when that would end?
No idea when it ends.
It would be good to have this as a, if it's not overly burdensome.
Is the town going to buy us dinner?
We will get food brought in if we need to.
Do we have to have it here?
Well, it's a public meeting, so...
Yes, we can have it at my house.
It is Mother's, it is Mother's Day.
It is Mother's Day. Wonderful.
In Mexico that day.
I mean, I would prefer, quite frankly, not to do it on a Friday, but...
What's, when's our proper date here?
May 10th. June 10th.
June 10th. We can't meet before that?
I wish you wouldn't use that for us.
It seems like a long time.
I know, it does seem like a long time. But it'll give us time to go over all the stuff.
There's vacations in between.
Sorry, my fault.
There's the possibility if... There's the possibility if, if, uh-
When is this a bad?
I don't have to sit on the deliberation.
Yeah, you don't.
No, you should.
Let's, let's not get too excited over there.
At least I could, I could miss one.
No.
Um, I'm back Monday, early morning on the 6th.
Yeah. No, we're not doing the 6th because-
I'll be asleep probably.
Yeah, and you won't have read the stuff, reread it unless you're taking it.
Yeah, I'm going to take it with me. Yeah.
First part of the day?
Uh, or the, I would do the 8th.
The other alternative is next Friday, because Susan-
It's Good Friday.
Eleanor won't be here. Not bad for me. Bad for George.
I'm happy.
Okay. We have to decide this. So, I know Ed's available on the 10th. Let me just verify that.
Does Eleanor have to be here for this?
There's a lot to digest, have a meaningful meeting that you may want to have enough time for the time.
Oh, yeah.
A lot to digest in the meantime and on these vacations.
Yeah, I mean, I have lots to go through.
Well, I, I don't anticipate that that is the only meeting either.
Right. Right. So.
Um, I, I, so I could see the 10th and then the 13th, you know, the 13th and 14th.
Just wanted to let you know, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as far as June 10th goes, this room will be completely booked with lifeguard trainings that entire week.
You, you have to have a, you have to have a-
Yeah, well, that's the completion day. We're not doing anything that day. I, we don't, do we even have to, I mean, we can vote during the deliberation.
Yeah, that may be the day you end up filing it, the decision.
So, should we just do the 10th? Oh, you're gone the 14th to the 17th. Instead of the 10th, I was going to come up with, you know, every Wednesday, the 29th, 22nd, the 10th, and, you know, should we start just talking about some things this week even if Eleanor's not there? Or do we need Eleanor?
It works for me. I mean, I can do it this Friday if Susan's back. I mean, I, I-
I can't get anything to you, so just so you know.
Well, there's nothing to, you can't get anything to us.
We have everything.
It's probably somewhere in one of these things.
I got to have it closed tomorrow, so I could do that.
It might just start, you know, start to start the discussion and how, how we're going to approach it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I have no idea if Ed's available, but-
So, now you're talking what day? I need to make sure it's-
The 19th.
April.
Can we do it a little later if that's just like the kickoff? Like, could we do like 4:00 to 7:00 maybe?
No.
No, it's too late.
If it's Friday, you, you finished at noon anyway.
Oh, no. I just don't, under my book with me, but I guess I'll figure it out.
Let's go 1:00 Friday to 19th.
Oh, golly.
Okay?
Can't even do 2:00?
And then, and then, that's April 19th. And then let's also tentatively, well, let's schedule May 10th.
Oh, golly.
So, April 19th?
Yeah.
At 2:00, you said?
2:00. I'd rather do 2:00.
It's good Fri-, you know, I, I'm not kidding about this one. I'm not kidding about this one. It is Good Friday. I don't, I don't want to get in, in anybody's situation. So, is that a problem for anybody?
It's not a problem for me as long as I'm able to, I don't want to be in on that. It's Good Friday. I want to, you know, maybe-
April 19th and then May what? May?
May 10th.
May 10th.
At 2:00. Right?
About 2:00 PM?
May 10th.
I'm, I'm open right now, so, so you can be clear.
Thought we were doing 1:00 on May 10th.
I thought-
We're doing 2:00 on both?
No, we're doing 1:00 on April 19th and 2:00 on May 10th.
Fine.
All right.
Okay?